Second, 2025 Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting. I'm Candace Breyer, Chairperson of the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals is a nine-person volunteer board nominated by the mayor and approved by city council. First, we will hear from Planning Services, represented tonight by John Barrett, then the applicant or their representative will make their presentation. Applicants will have five minutes in which to make their presentation. Staff will keep time and will announce when 30 seconds are remaining. Public comment is available in person or remotely. We will first call on individuals present to address the board, then remote participants. To speak during a public hearing or during public comment remotely, press star nine if listening by phone, or use the raise hand feature if viewing through the web link. For phone access, call 877-853-5247 and enter meeting ID 938-1648-1007. City staff will select callers that have raised their hand using the last three digits of your phone number, or by name if available for those accessing through the web link. You will hear an automated announcement that the host is allowing you to speak. When speaking, please move to a quiet area and mute any television or background sounds. We may ask questions of either the city or the applicant. We will acknowledge any written comments received by the board. We will allow an appearing party to express their support or objections. The board will then discuss the appeal and formulate a motion to approve the appeal. Five affirmative votes of the board will be required for an appeal to be granted. Finally, any qualified party who is aggrieved by a decision of the board can appeal that decision to the Washtenaw County Circuit Court on a timely basis. Roll call. Candace Breyer, I am here. Dave DeVardy.
DeVardy here.
Patty Laskowski, here. Julie Weatherby.
Here.
Drew Dunson.
Here.
Mike Daniel. Dharma Atman. Christina Glusak, here. We have a quorum. Approval of the agenda. I will note that the petitioner for the second item on our agenda tonight, CBA 25-0025 2201 Lafayette Road, has requested to be postponed to the December 3 meeting. So we can remove that item from our agenda this evening, and we'll see that back here again in December, and everything after that will just kind of move up one spot. So with that adjustment, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion from Julie, support?
Support.
Support from Patty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to approval of minutes. We have minutes from the September 24, 2025 ZBA meeting. Are there any questions, comments, corrections to those minutes? If not, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Thank you, Dharma, support? Thank you, Julie, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Moving on to our first public hearing tonight, petition ZBA 25-0022, 301, 311, 315, 317, and 319 West Huron Street, and 102 and 106 South First Street. John?
I'm John Barrett, zoning coordinator for the City of Ann Arbor, and as Candace said, this is ZBA 25-0022. Brandon Chaney, representing the property owner, is requesting a height variance of 59 feet 11 inches for a total proposed building height of 137 feet 11 inches, which includes the mechanical screening. The site is partially located in a floodway fringe in Zone D2 Downtown Interface. The Unified Development Code, also known as the UDC, Table 5.17-6 Downtown Character Overlay Zoning District's Building Massing Standards allows for a maximum building height of 60 feet in the D2 First Street Character Overlay District, which apply to this project location. This is a site plan project, and we have a planner here this evening from the City of Ann Arbor Planning Department, Julia Shake, and this is her site plan project, and she's going to take over part of the presentation at this time. Julia?
There we go, I think. Thank you, Mr. Barrett. A little bit more about the background of this proposed variance request. The requested variance is part of a proposed project for the same site, 315 West Huron Site Plan for City Planning Commission, SP 25-0014, is a proposed plan for the construction of a fully electric 10-story mixed-use development featuring 280 units, a coffee shop, retail, and amenity spaces. The ground floor would be mostly comprised of covered parking, including EV charging, with access from West Washington Street on the south side of the combined parcels. The first floor would have additional covered parking and coffee retail space with access from South First Street. Floors 1 through 10 would contain a mixture of Studio 1 and 2 bedrooms with 15% of the units reserved for affordable housing, based on the City of Ann Arbor definition. So a little bit more context for this variance request, this variance request is on top, so the height restriction for this area is 60 feet based on the First Street Overlay District. So in downtown areas, there's D1, D2 zoning districts, and then there are also overlay districts. There's actually three layers of zoning-based regulations for downtown areas, and there's also street designations, primary or secondary street designations, that deal a little bit more with design, of the design of the facades. But there's these three layers of zoning and urban design regulations for our downtown area. So this is in D2 and in the First Street Overlay District. First Street Overlay District max building height is 60 feet, but developers are also allowed to apply for a 30% height bonus by either providing affordable housing or sustainability. This project proposes to do both, but these two bonuses essentially are not cumulative. So you'd get the 30% whether you decide to offer one, the other, and meeting the criteria as defined in the UDC, or both. So that would take it to 78 feet. Above the 78 feet is the variance request for 59 feet 11 inches. Staff took a look at the variance request in tandem with the site plan. The site plan has been submitted and is accessible through stream, and staff recognizes that there are specific features to this site, notably the Ann Arbor Railroad on the west side, the Almendinger Building kind of on the east side and southeast side, and the floodway fringe, which is located on the north side of the parcel and a small pocket on the very southern tip of the parcel. The floodway fringe encompasses approximately 11.4% of the total lot area of the two combined parcels. Additionally, a notable portion of the floodway fringe area overlaps with the area abutting the railroad on the west side. The total combined parcel perimeter of the two parcels of the proposed project is approximately 995 feet. Of this, approximately 45 feet of the lot line abuts the Almendinger Building on the east and southeast side, and 140 feet is a building wall along the railroad on the west side. Looking at the combined development requirements, so we talked about D1, D2 versus D2, this is in D2, and then the First Street Overlay District. There are other development requirements and zoning standards that need to be met. In the D2 Downtown Interface Zoning District, the maximum permitted building coverage of lot area is 80%, or 80%. This is found in UDC Table 517-5. The proposed development, as submitted in SP 25-0014 and currently under review, has a building coverage of 78%. In other words, the proposed development has demonstrated, the proposed development under the site plan has demonstrated the ability to avoid these three potentially complicated development issues, the floodway, fringe, the railroad, and the Almendinger Building, while still almost maxing out the maximum building coverage for the site at 78%, as it is 80%. While existing conditions cited may constrain development activity on the site, to some degree, the proposed site plan demonstrates that this, the possibility of a development scenario that addresses these challenges while also covering 78% of the lot area. Therefore, the identified constraints do not appear to meaningfully limit the applicant's ability to achieve the development potential as allowed by the UDC, the Unified Development Code, when looking at all of the development regulations for these parcels as a whole. Thank you.
So I will go through the PowerPoint presentation. As you can see on the, turn your attention to the monitors, the first slide is the zoning map, showing the location of the proposed project in the center of your screen. The two parcels, you've got the 300 West Huron Addresses, and then you've got the 102 and the 106 South First Street Addresses right here, the two parcels combined. And you see the adjacent railroad tracks, and there's the floodplain to the west. These are the downtown character district areas, and this one is in the First Street Overlay District, and you can see it in green, and it's the properties right there. Next slide is the current conditions and adjacent properties map. And the next slide is the zoomed-in aerial photo of the subject property. The next slide is the survey that was submitted with the overall project and the application. And the next slide is the proposed building footprint. You can see it highlighted in bold all the way around the property, adjacent, as Julia stated, next to the Almendinger Building, and the floodplain and the railroad tracks to the west. Next slide is a ground floor of this proposed building, the ground floor floor plan. Next slide is the first floor floor plan, second and third. Hold on one second. The fourth through the ninth, and then the 10th, and the roof plan. These are some northeast and southeast perspectives of the proposed building, and the elevations and how they'll look from the street. These are more north and south building sections. These are the east and west building sections. These are the photos that we took of the current conditions of the property. You see it's right at the intersection of Huron and First. Everyone's probably familiar with the subject buildings, and then there's the Almendinger and the background. This is looking directly west down Huron Street along the sidewalk and the north face of the existing building. This is looking east down Huron Street, the opposite direction. This is the current building as it relates to the, at the far west end and adjacent to the railroad tracks. This is from the other side of the parking lot, and the Almendinger Building to the right and the backside, the south side of the building right now. Picture of the parking lot. Julia, could you comment on that slide right there?
Yes, this shows the current building. This is on First Street. On the left side is the Almendinger Building, and on the right side of the frame is one of the existing buildings that would be proposed to be torn down. The buildings are currently built right up to the lot line, just to give that context.
All right, thank you. And just a photo from the railroad tracks looking eastward at the existing conditions.
And this shows also, if you're, sorry to interrupt, shows the building, existing building, the embankment for the railroad flyover above Huron. This wall appears to be kind of, has become, whether intentionally or not, part of the supporting structure for that embankment. It serves as that function, at least today.
That concludes the staff presentation at this time, and Julia or myself can take any questions that you have. We also have additional slides when the applicant comes to the podium.
Thank you, Julia. Thank you, John. Any questions for staff? Dave?
So I guess for Julia, you referenced the potential bonuses, and one of them, you said affordable housing based on the City of Ann Arbor definition. And what is that? What are they providing? What is the definition, and what are they providing to meet that definition?
Yeah.
Or proposing to provide?
One second. It's 15, I always forget the exact numbers, 15% of the units reserved for households at 60% of the area median income.
And what's the current area median income?
I can look that up.
I think it's around $125,000.
I think it's close. I don't know if it's past $100,000, last time I checked, but it might be.
It is past $100,000.
So the 60%, the last time, and I don't know if I've seen the updated numbers for this year, I think 60% AMI for Ann Arbor is around the 80,000, somewhere in the 80,000 range, I think.
Right, but the AMI is 125,000. So 60% would be around 80,000.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, if the petitioner is here, please come forward, sign in, state your name for the record. You will have five minutes.
Hey, everybody. My name is Ryan Talbot. I'm the developer on this project. Just a quick introduction for the project, and I'll hand it off to the architect. I'm a Michigan native, U of M alum, and I specialize in urban infill housing. So emphasis on walkability, sustainability, trying to be as future-focused as we can, and I tend to find myself working on sites that have some challenges associated with them. So I appreciate your time taking a look at how the hardships that we've identified do impact the building, so.
And over to David. David Nims, Hobson Black Architects, on North State Street, Ann Arbor, Michigan. I'll cruise through these kind of quickly, and we can come back and answer any questions that anybody might have. This first one is an exhibit showing relationship to residential zoning, how far away we are with this site, and showing adjacent PUDs kind of around us. We are over the 300-foot max. We only make reference to that as the recent TC-1 guidance has offered that when you're beyond the 300-foot mark from a residentially zoned piece of land, it could be advised to go up to 120 feet in height, so we can go to the next. This is just showing the project site and its relation to the transitional zone of the D2. We can go to the next. This is a height map, just showing the context of what we have kind of surrounding us right now. We're bounded by the Y to the west, that's 72 feet, so 12 feet over the height limit of the First Street Character Overlay. We can go to the next. These are two diagrams that I think might be better explained in the 2D plan views that we sent over yesterday. John, if you wouldn't mind jumping over to that. Yeah, so this first one, this is what's allowed by Rite with 80% lot coverage on the site. The problems with this is that it would be built in the floodplain area, it would be built, you know, within a seven-foot offset from the property line that's abutting the elevated rail line, and it would be built abutting the Almendinger Building for the full seven stories of height. As we saw in the pictures about the site, the Almendinger Building does have windows on the north side. I only reference that because while we are asking for a variance to the height of the character overlay, that character overlay district also asks us to respect buildings of significance, and while the Almendinger Building's not a building identified or protected by any historic designations, it was noted in a 1994 survey as a building that, you know, epitomized kind of industrial architecture of the time, and it does have those windows on the north side, it does have daylight coming in those windows. So, you know, this footprint doesn't necessarily work when we talk about building with resiliency, because it's intensifying use in the floodplain, and for long-term viability, having the elevated railroad berm, which is about 15 feet above the grade where it's at, and then additionally, the train that comes by will be at another 10 to 12 feet of height running along that. So there's about 22 feet of boundary when we consider that along that westerly side. It also internalizes the open space, which there is guidance in some city documents to direct open space to be, you know, put adjacent to public ways where possible. Obviously, we're going to go to the next slide. So this shows the building footprint that we have proposed. That building footprint is at the grade level of First Street and below. There's about 15 feet of fall as we move from east to west on the site. So this footprint won't be visible. If you're standing on First Street, this footprint is, you can't see this footprint, because it's all below grade all along that First Street boundary. The westerly boundary of this is kind of where we set the edge of the building, defining what we thought was a reasonable setback from the elevated rail line, and to avoid being in the bulk of the floodplain. It also lets us repurpose some of that existing building by removing the roof to make that open active green space and open space adjacent to the public way, without necessarily having to disturb the existing retaining wall that is kind of built into part of the embankment now. We'll reinforce that as required. We'll have to have structural engineering do that evaluation as we go, but trying to have as light of a touch over there as possible. The problem with this footprint is that if we were to build this to full seven stories to max out what we could build when we are using the full perimeter of the site, we would end up with a building that isn't necessarily a healthy or resilient way to build, because we can't put openings along the property line that are interior to the parcel. That would affect the Almendinger Building, because it would take away their windows and their access to daylight, and it would mean we just don't necessarily have a long-term functional space by doing that. So that led to the next slide, which shows the footprint of the building, the typical footprint of the building as it rises above that first level grade. The magenta shaded area is the setback we were proposing that's far enough back from the Almendinger Building to not require any additional work to be done on their building to protect it from fire. Back when those buildings were built, we didn't have such a robust fire code, and now, you know, they want about a 30-foot setback between buildings to have openings in the wall, period. So we identified this amount of setback, and that's the building that rises above that First Street grade level, as what would be a reasonable ask to develop a footprint that worked for residential, was a healthy way to build, and had access to daylight, that wasn't going to be encumbered by any future development that might take place on the adjacent parcel, and respected the Almendinger Building, and, you know, reasonably set back from the train track and created avoidance of the floodplain. Lastly, what's not shown in this is, you know, as I noted earlier, the train tracks are about 15 feet, a train can be, you know, be somewhere in the range of 10 to 12 feet. So we took the program area on the north-south leg and just raised that up again, so that when the train goes by, which, I mean, I've been stuck at that train for 10 minutes before coming into town, you don't need people living in a building where that is the case, and they're sitting there for 10 minutes with a loud train going by their space. So we've elevated that up, and that pushed that up another 10 feet when we did that, just to avoid that in the long term. I'm good. That's great.
All right. Thank you. Questions for the petitioner? Patty, yeah?
What is your ratio of parking spaces to the?
We have, it's probably about 50%, I think. I don't know the number, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head. It'd be a little less than 50%. We have 100 units, or 100 parking spaces and 250 units, so a little less than 50%.
Any other questions for the petitioner? All right, thank you very much. If there is anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this petition, now is your opportunity to do so. If you are here in person, please come forward, sign in, state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, Justin Herrick. I don't really enjoy public speaking, so I wrote something down, I'm going to read Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Justin Herrick, and I'm one of the business and property owners of the site under consideration for this development. I've lived in Ann Arbor for over 20 years, have started multiple businesses downtown in the surrounding area. I care deeply for the city, its success, its growth, and its character. Ann Arbor's master plan calls for more density, sustainability, and housing affordability. Over the past decade, university construction and large-scale student housing projects have exploded. The skyline's changed, we've watched massive university and student housing developments rise all around us. But here's the problem, in my opinion. While student housing continues to expand, housing for regular people, teachers, restaurant workers, every day, Ann Arborites, is lagged far behind. As a downtown business owner, I see this imbalance every day. Students in the university are vital to the community and our businesses, but increasingly, the broader population is being dwarfed and pushed out of downtown. So when a project comes So when a project comes along that helps rebalance that equation, that adds residents who live and work here year-round, I believe the ZBA, with its authority to grant this variance, should embrace it wholeheartedly. This project aligns perfectly with the city's stated goals, increasing downtown density, promoting walkability and bikeability, advancing environmental and affordability objectives, yet it's being held back by what amounts to an arbitrary line drawn long ago, an overlay limiting the height buildings can be as you go from one side of First Street to the other. A far more meaningful boundary, once again, in my opinion, would be the train tracks, which naturally divide downtown from the west-side neighborhoods, and would perfectly accommodate this project. In essence, that's what the variance is asking for. We should be encouraging developers who align with our city's goals, not discouraging them, in favor of those simply looking to cash in on the next round of student housing. I also want to briefly address something I'm sure some of you are thinking. I'm speaking passionately tonight about supporting projects that I believe make Ann Arbor a better city, and it's fair to wonder whether that passion is rooted in self-interest or genuine concern for the city. My partners and I are small, local entrepreneurs, operating in one of the toughest industries there is, restaurants and bars. Most days are spent putting out fires, juggling challenges, and doing everything we can to just keep our businesses operating on solid financial footing.
Thirty seconds remaining.
What's up?
You have thirty seconds left.
Thirty seconds. Hard work, stressful, lots of anxiety and uncertainty. This project represents a rare opportunity for us to reinvest in our businesses in the future. We're not leaving downtown, we still operate two other businesses here, and others across town, and are deeply engaged in making Ann Arbor a vibrant and attractive place to live and work. To deny this reasonable variance would send the wrong message, that our policies say one thing, but our actions say another, that bureaucratic red tape and procedure supersede common sense progress towards our goals. So I ask you tonight, if we truly believe in our vision, in density, in affordability, in environmental responsibility, and a vibrant downtown, then let's make decisions that live up to that vision. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Dan Gunning, an Ann Arbor resident. I'd like to say a few words in support of the rule of law. Ann Arbor is a very nice place to live, because we have community standards, we've agreed upon a set of values as citizens, we've benefited from intelligent zoning laws. I'm here to oppose the request for the variance for this 315 Huron project. The proposal is something that is drastically out of line with the aesthetics, it's a very fifty-nine feet above the existing standards, or should not be set aside for what I consider an ill-conceived project. In terms of affordability, I think restaurant workers and local artists and musicians can't afford eighty thousand dollars, don't make eighty thousand dollars and up, or for apartments, so they may have researched what requirements will get them qualified for an exception, but I think there are some obstacles that I see as someone who spends time in this neighborhood on a weekly basis. I believe there's a proposed driveway on South First Street, and traffic on the Hundred Block of South First is frequently difficult to negotiate, because people are backed up trying to get into the parking lot across the street from this project. I'm afraid that this many residential units at that location might put negative pressure on the Delana Center, which is performing a very important function in Ann Arbor, affects all of our quality of life to provide those services, although it is sort of unruly-looking from the street, from the other side of the street, with people hanging out there and stuff. Also, that's an awful lot of apartments that are really close to the southbound railroad tracks, which blow their horn quite loud when they're crossing, and they have to every evening as they're going south trying to cross Liberty and First Street. I know the atrium building is for sale, but the, I think this is a bit of an overreach, because the other, the building that houses Live and The Last Word is not for sale, so I think they're anticipating making enough money on this deal to be able to offer those businesses.
Thirty seconds.
More than, you know, more than the property is worth to make this project go forward, and it's also going to force out a tenant who is renting space with a successful, trying to just develop a successful South Korean restaurant, and he's just going to be kicked out of his, out of his space there on South First Street, so that's, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on this petition? If there's anyone remotely, please press star nine or use the raise hand button.
There are no callers.
Thank you, Courtney. With that, the public hearing is closed, and, oh, no, it's not. I will note quickly that we did receive a few letters on this project. We have a letter of support from Rishi Narayan, the co-owner of the building at 102 South First Street. We have a letter of support.
That's also from me.
From Devin Kilpatrick. We have a letter of opposition from Kitty Khan at 515 Crowe Street, and then we have a letter from Justin Herrick in support. With that, the public hearing is closed, and now we are in discussion.
I have one more question, I guess I could have asked this of the developer, but I'll ask it of our planning staff. Was a PUD considered for this? Because I noticed that on the zoning map, there were a number of parcels right in this area that were our PUDs.
Yeah, there are a few PUDs adjacent, and just a little bit of context, I think this area was like rezoned, our downtown zoning districts were kind of reorganized, rezoned around 2009, I believe. Staff did present various options, possibility of ZBA, or of a variance request, possibility of a rezoning, likely PUD, staff did present various possibilities to potentially achieve this development call.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry, Dharma, I was deep in thought.
Sorry, I'm trying to sort through all of these pages in details, and I want to make sure I understand a few things. So, the variance they're seeking is for fifty-nine feet, eleven inches. Can staff clarify where the electrification and affordability bonus comes into the thirty percent? Is this on top of the thirty percent that they would be allowed if they did that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then with respect to the portion of the floodplain, and I always get the terminology mixed up, but the portion of the floodplain that they're trying to avoid, that's flood fringe, right? So.
It is, eleven point four percent roughly of the site is floodway fringe.
Okay, which they are allowed to build on.
Uh-huh, directives discourage, but there are possibilities for development is floodway, or the more restrictive floodway that doesn't allow more uses.
Okay, thanks.
Dave?
I actually agree that we are looking for higher density in this area, and I think the current regulations that we expanded, including the D2 zoning district and the First Street overlay district, allow for increased density. I'm opposed to this. I just got back from Paris, I'll tell you, and buildings there are five or six stories, by and large, within this main downtown area, and yeah, there's higher density, because there's not a two-story building next to, these five and six-story buildings are solid. And it's quite a livable city in terms of pedestrian access, and I've got numerous photos on my phone that I just brought back today. Right now, it's midnight Paris time, or past. I'm opposed to this, it's, you're asking for a hundred thirty-eight feet, and I'm looking at, right now on the screen, in excess of everything on the screen, except for the potential that could be built across the street by Wright, and I don't know if that's ever going to happen, but it's, I just see this as trending too far, and I, with the current bonuses that you could get with the affordable housing, although I prefer to see affordability at a thirty percent AMI, which really addresses the service sector employees that are looking for housing to work in the restaurants, that builders, the owners, the business owners are advocating that we need more housing for them, the eighty thousand dollars, you know, I don't know a lot of restaurant employees that make that kind of income. So, I'm opposed to this, I think a substantial increase in density could happen with what's currently available, and to go sixty feet on top of the bonus that you could get for the housing affordability or the sustainability bonuses is very unreasonable. And as I said, look at what's there now, and this exceeds all of it, I will oppose it.
Christina?
I had a question back to staff, and yeah, I probably should have asked this earlier. Can you talk through the process that has occurred to date with the Planning Commission? Planning Commission? Oh, yeah, it is, oh, I'm not talking to it, okay. Can you just go through the process that's been completed to date with going through the Planning Commission, public comment? I understand that there's been some interface with public comment and presentation, and how that has shaped the building and the project that we see today in the application?
Yeah, so, there's been no, nothing has been brought, like, the only development type that would go to Planning Commission directly at the beginning would be a PUD, what we call a pre-PUD conference, so this case, they've applied as by right development with, you know, the knowledge that they would need this variance to be able to construct as demonstrated in their site plan. So, when this applicant applied, we were right in the middle of a process of reworking our community participation guidelines, so I believe they completed under our old guidelines, which would require sending a postcard out and holding a community meeting, and I believe that occurred within the last month, so they did have a community meeting, but that's kind of been the community engagement requirements up to this point, and then just working with staff as they were working towards preparing their application materials for the site plan.
Julie?
So this is one of those where it's, it's a little hard for me, because sort of what I would prefer personally, versus what I think are sort of rules and regulations, which we do have things that we're supposed to follow, whether I like this building, whether I, you know, think it would be helpful to have apartments at this level here, we do have criteria that we need to follow, and one of them is the variance shall be a minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land or structure, and I think one of the commenters said, you know, zoning is sort of random lines, and yes, it is kind of random lines, but it's random lines that mean a lot, and that people follow and make decisions on, and until we change those, we, it feels weird to just sort of, we can't just pick and choose, that we actually have criteria that we need to follow. So this one, to me, feels like that, that minimum variance is, that this is not a minimum variance, this is a different building type that we're trying to put into an existing zoning district, and so it just feels like it doesn't meet our criteria, whether, whether I personally like the building or the use, it doesn't feel like it meets our criteria.
I will echo those comments, I think Julie said it very well, this feels like a D1 or a TC-1 building that you're trying to fit on a D2 site, and maybe a smaller height variance would be something that, that might meet more of the minimum necessary, but asking to double the height of the building over, like, what's, what's allowed by code is, is a tough, it's a tough sell for me. I recognize that it gets awkward when you're the property that's on the line, right? Like, everybody across the street from you is bigger and taller, and they're held to a different standard, but those lines exist everywhere, all over the city, there's always somebody across the street from something different, and you have to go by what applies to your site, so I just don't think it meets the standard for variance, in my opinion.
Any other discussion? Are we ready for a motion?
I'd make a motion.
I think we're ready, thank you, Dave.
ZBA 25-0022, 301, 311, 315, 317, 319, West Huron Street, and 102, 106, South First Street. In accordance with the established standards for approval, the ZBA, Zoning Board of Appeals, hereby grants a variance of fifty-nine feet, eleven inches, for a total proposed building height of a hundred thirty-seven feet, eleven inches, including mechanical screening. Table 5.17-6, Downtown Character Overlay Zoning District's Building Massing Standards allows for a maximum building height of sixty feet in the D2 First Street Character Overlay District. The proposed project is further identified as SP 25-0014.
We have a motion, thank you, Dave, do you have support? Support from Drew. Dharma?
No.
Julie?
No.
Dave?
Devarti, no.
Christina?
Yes.
Patty?
No.
Drew?
Yes.
I also vote no, the request is denied. Moving on, we have postponed petition ZBA 25-0024 to the December meeting, so we are at ZBA 25-0023, 924 Woodlawn Avenue. John?
Darren Millman, property owner, is requesting a variance of four hundred square feet from table 5.17-2, two-family residential zoning district dimensions. If granted, the variance will allow the construction of a duplex to an existing single-family residence. The subject property is four thousand six hundred square feet in area, the property is zoned R2A, two-family dwelling district, and requires a minimum lot area of five thousand square feet. The subject property is located on the south side of Woodlawn Avenue, west of Packers Street, in the Lower Burns Park neighborhood. The home was constructed in 1950 and is approximately one thousand one hundred and twenty-two square feet in size. According to the survey that was submitted with the applicant, the current lot size is four thousand six hundred square feet in area. The applicant is seeking to construct a three hundred and eighty-three-square-foot dormer addition that will allow the conversion of the existing single-family home to a duplex. The structure is currently a four-bedroom residence. If the lot area variance is approved, the home will convert to a duplex with both units containing four bedrooms. The first-floor unit will expand into the basement with two bedrooms on each level, the second-floor unit will contain four bedrooms, and the kitchen and living room will be on the first floor. And I've also included the district table for the two-family residence districts, and you can see the R2A on your staff report, it shows the minimum lot area. If you'll turn your attention to the monitors, you'll see the first slide is the zoning map, the subject property is highlighted at the center of your screen, and you see surrounding properties of this whole area, this, it's bold and is zoned R2A. Next screen is the area, or map, showing the surrounding properties and existing conditions. Next screen is the area, or map, showing the surrounding properties and existing conditions. And the next slide is the zoomed-in aerial photo of the subject property with the existing residents. The next slide is the survey that was submitted by the applicant, and you see that it's right there in the center of your screen, 4,600 square feet in area per the surveyor. The next slide is the existing floor plans and new proposed floor plans. You see on the left-hand corner, you see the existing basement floor plan. You see, on the far-right corner, you see a newly proposed basement floor plan. Like I said, it's going to have the two bedrooms in the basement. And then, on the bottom of the screen, you see the existing first floor and then the proposed first floor. Next slide shows the existing second floor and then the proposed second floor plan with the second unit and the duplex upstairs. And the bottom of the screen shows existing roof plans and newly proposed roof plans. So, you see a little bit of variation with that new dormer addition in the center bottom of the screen as opposed to the left existing. These are the elevations that are, on the top, the existing front elevation and existing right side, and then the new front and the new right side. And then, the next slide shows the existing rear elevation, and you see the proposed rear elevation below it, and then the existing left-side elevation and the newly proposed left side. And you really see this new dormer addition and that elevation. These are the photos that I took on my inspection. You see the front of the home, the existing single-family dwelling. The next slide is looking to the west side of the home. The home on the right is the adjoining property or the adjacent property. Next slide is looking directly down the east side of the lot, right down the driveway, and the existing detached garage in the backyard. This is a photo of the subject property, the fenced-in rear yard area. Next slide is the rear elevation of the existing home. And this is a slide that was submitted by the applicant. He can speak on it more. For some reason, that didn't come through. You've got a handout that shows that better. It shows, yeah, everyone's got a handout. You see the subject parcel is in blue, and then all the red highlighted parcels are surrounding properties in the area that are existing duplexes. But I'll let the applicant comment further on that. That is the end of the staff's presentation, and I can take any questions that you have at this time.
Thank you. John? Questions for John? Dharma?
I'm sorry, I already showed this, but the properties in this area, are they all of a similarly smaller lot size than the minimum of 5,000, or are you?
4,000.
Let me go back to that screen. That kind of shows a little bit, maybe that. That whole area is zoned R2A, this whole Holden area.
Okay.
You see the R2A right there. And then, you can see that many of these properties, some of them meet, like, I'm sure this one right here, two meets, but that one doesn't, you know? It's hard to go through every single one, but there are quite a few nonconforming properties in the area, I would say.
So, they're nonconforming no matter what you put on it? If you put a single-family, new single-family detached to them?
So, no.
Okay.
So, by right, you can construct a single-family residence.
Okay.
It's when you go to the second family, the second unit, that it has to meet the district requirements of 5,000 square feet.
Okay. Do you know how many existing duplexes are actually along here?
I do not, but then that handout, you have.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, thanks.
And there are probably a half a dozen or so that are highlighted in the red.
Oh, okay.
I'll speak to it when I have my.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
John, as far as you know, this lot's only nonconforming for the minimum lot area, right? Like, it would still meet the other setback and other requirements of?
That's correct.
Okay. Dave, did you have a question?
That's actually exactly the question I was going to ask. They're not asking for any variances for setbacks?
No. So, as you can see, the lot requirements for the district require it to be 40 feet wide, and the survey shows that it's 40 feet wide. And you can see the highlighted, or the existing setbacks, the setbacks for the district are going to be, they meet the setbacks as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions for John? All right. If the petitioner's here, please come forward, sign and state your name. You'll have five minutes.
Once again, for the record, my name is Darren Millman, and I am the property owner, along with my wife, of 924 Woodlawn. As John described, this home is located in the R2A, two-family zoning district, and is surrounded by many duplex homes. Right now, I'll speak to, the slide didn't indicate, do you have a handout perhaps that shows some coloration on it? Our property is 924 in blue. In red, these don't, this isn't a comprehensive list of the duplexes. There's actually far, far more than that in this, within this R2A grouping. These are simply the other duplexes that are also on lots that are less than the 5,000 square feet. That's why the map should be labeled as undersized R2A duplex properties, if that makes sense. So, it's, again, not a comprehensive list of the duplex properties. There's actually, I don't know if it's a majority of the property, but certainly properties in this district, but there are far, far more that.
There it is.
Because there are some lots in there that meet the 5,000 and operate as duplexes. So, I just wanted to clarify that. As you look at that, maybe, I'd like to specifically call out the property at 914 Woodlawn, only because that's a property that operates as, that is a duplex, and the dimensions of that lot are actually identical to our property, as are many of the, on the south side of Woodlawn there, are the same dimensions as our lot. The proposed second-floor dormer addition and the whole house interior remodel is all to be done within the existing footprint of the home without impeding further into any of the existing setbacks. The proposed remodeled property will include all-new plumbing, electrical, and mechanical systems, along with upgraded safety and energy efficiency features. The proposed home will feature high-end interior and exterior finishes and will be designed to fit seamlessly within the existing streetscape. In my opinion, the requested variance of 400 square feet is a relatively small request and will certainly not have any negative impact on any of the neighboring property owners. With that, I'll conclude and respectfully ask for your support for my variance request, and free to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Questions for the petitioner? Dave?
Yes. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. You're not changing the footprint at all.
That's correct. We're not changing, it's only a second-floor dormer addition on the front. The home currently has a dormer on the back, so it's essentially what they call a, like a one-and-a-half-story Cape Cod-style in front, and so, it'll just be a true two-story when the remodel was completed.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? All right. Thank you very much. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this petition, now's your opportunity. Please come forward, sign and state your name for the record. If you are accessing the meeting remotely, please press star nine or use the raised hand button.
There are no callers.
Thank you, Courtney. I do not believe we received any written communication for this petition, so with that, the public hearing is closed, and we're in discussion. Dave?
So, just a simple question. John, we've recently modified things where people can make a modification to a nonconforming structure if they don't change the footprint and just do it administratively, can't they?
Yeah, but it has to be on a conforming lot.
Oh, on a conforming lot.
He doesn't have a conforming lot, anyway.
Okay. Gotcha. And the only, the only nonconformity is the 400 feet, square feet deficiency. Okay. Thank you.
If you currently don't have a nonconforming structure, we have a nonconforming lot. If we had a nonconforming structure, then.
If this was already a duplex, they could make adjustments to it.
Correct.
Just by going administratively and.
Depending on what the alterations.
Alterations, right.
As long as they met the code. But since he's going from one unit to two, and it's not a nonconforming unit, now he's got to meet the lot size requirements.
Thank you.
You have another comment?
I grew up in this neighborhood. I grew up at 914 Dewey, which my brother and I still own. My dad, in the early 1950s, turned it into a duplex with the dormer up on the second floor. It's a modest duplex that my brother and I still own, and we rent at truly affordable rental rates that are affordable for people at probably 35% of AMI. I'm intimately familiar with this neighborhood. All the, or almost all the lots would be deficient for being converted to duplexes. And I think this neighborhood is ideal for duplexes, is modest increases in density without going up 10 stories or anything, but increasing the density and still allowing space in backyards for parking and the like. It's, as the petitioner said, it's a minimal request, just because, to make, because their lot size is slightly too small, which is true of almost all the lots in this neighborhood, including the lots on Dewey Street. So, I'm in favor of this. I think this is the kind of low-impact density increases that are in keeping with the nature of the neighborhood, and I'm going to support this.
I'll just say I agree with everything you said, Dave. Except for growing up on Dewey. I did not grow up on Dewey. Any other comments? Are we ready for a motion?
Happy to have a motion sheet.
All right. Thank you, Dave.
ZBA 25-0023, 924 Woodlawn Avenue. In accordance with established standards for approval, the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants a variance of 400 square feet from table 5.17-2, two-family residential zoning district dimensions. If granted, the variance will allow the construction of a duplex to an existing single-family residence. The subject property is 4,600 square feet in area. The duplex is to be built according to the submitted plans.
Thank you, Dave. We have a motion. Do we have support?
Support.
All right. We'll say, Dharma? Dave?
DeVarty, yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
I also vote yes. Dharma?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
The request is granted. Moving on to petition ZBA 25-0032, 520 Sewell Boulevard. John?
The next petition is ZBA 25-0032, addressed as 520 Sewell Boulevard. Rob Parker, representing the property owner, is requesting a variance of 179.6 square feet from section 5.16.6 subsection D, accessory uses and structures. If granted, the variance will allow a two-story detached garage with an accessory dwelling unit, also known as an ADU, above to exceed the allowable 35% rear open space requirement for accessory buildings and structures. The maximum allowed building footprint and the rear open space on this corner lot is 241 square feet. The proposed two-story garage and ADU will have a footprint of 420.6 square feet in that rear open space area. The property is zoned R1D, single-family residential. The subject property is on a corner lot on the west side of Sewell Boulevard, south of West Liberty Street in the Eber White neighborhood. The parcel is at the intersection of Sewell Boulevard and Wakefield Avenue. The home was constructed in 1929 and is approximately 1,917 square feet in area. The parcel contains 7,710 square feet. The rear open space for the subject property is 20 by 34.43 feet for a total of 687 square feet. The maximum allowed impervious building footprint is 241 square feet. The total footprint of the detached structure is 613.4, but only 420.6 square feet of that will be in the rear open space. The south side of the building will be six feet from the rear lot line, and the west side will meet the required three-foot side yard setback. The entrance to the garage will face Wakefield Avenue. The ADU will resemble an efficiency apartment, as there will be not, will not be a dedicated bedroom. The ADU will have an office, living area, a small kitchen, and a bathroom and Murphy bed. If you will turn your attention to the monitors, you'll see the first slide is the zoning map. You see the subject property highlighted in the center of your screen, the corner of Sewell and Wakefield. The next slide is the area map, showing surrounding properties and existing conditions. And the next slide is a zoomed-in aerial photo of the subject property with the existing garage in its current state, and it's proposed to be demolished. Next slide is the survey that was submitted with the application. The next slide is the site plan, showing the proposed detached garage, and I have taken a bold red line to show where that 20-foot rear yard setback is, and then you see the portion of the building, the structure, outside of the 20-foot setback with the stairwell to the second floor and storage area on the first floor. And that portion is not in the rear open space and is not counted towards the variance The next slide shows the existing residents, and on the top, and then the bottom, shows the proposed garage with the ADU on the second floor. In the center of the screen, you see, like, the efficiency apartment unit, and then the top, lower right, is the proposed first floor with the garage, the stairwell, and the storage area. And you see the bold red line that shows that area not counted towards the variance These are elevation drawings that were submitted by the applicant. These are more elevation drawings of the proposed structure, and then the bottom in relationship to the home. These are the photos that I took when I made my inspection of the property. You see the front of the property on Sewell. The next slide is along my backs towards Wakefield, looking directly at the existing garage in its current condition. You see the relationship with the back property line to the left, and then the house to the Just looking towards the house and looking at the relationship of the two structures. This is the existing garage, and looking towards the south, towards the adjacent property This is looking at the relationship between the two structures, the principal residence and the existing garage right now, and looking directly across the street at neighbors, and looking also across the street at the adjacent properties. That concludes my presentation at this time. You also have a handout. You also have a handout of the statistics showing, yep, I enlarged it. You wouldn't be able to see that from the screen. It's in your staff report as well. It shows the statistics of the buildable area and the setback calculations as well. I can take any questions that you might have at this time of that, and also the, Rob Parker, the applicant, can also explain some of that, if you have any other questions, too.
Thank you, John. Julie?
So how does the existing garage relate? Like, that's going to be demolished.
Correct.
And the new one, but where does the existing garage sit in the property? Like, like, what's going to be the...
I can answer that during the presentation if that helps. Oh, where does the existing garage sit right now?
Yeah, like...
Right. If you look at the survey, you can see on that screen, that's the existing conditions right now.
Okay. I mean, so it is also out of the, like, if it...
It's also nonconforming.
Yes. It's occupying a portion of the area that...
You should have, I gave everyone, I know you've got a lot of papers tonight.
I know. Just, would you like this one? Would you like this one?
It looks like that. But...
Oh, that one. This one?
There you go.
Yeah, I can't read that quite, quickly.
This one was on the pile. Dave?
So this goes...
Let me answer your question real quick. So Julie, do you have it? So do you see where it says, "Buildable area within rear setback allowed is 241 square feet"?
Okay.
And then just below that, it says, "Existing garage within the rear setback." And that exceeds, it's 395.1, that exceeds the 241 by approximately 145 or 150 feet. Not doing the math real quick, but, and then you see the proposed garage ADU below that at 420.6, with a net change within the rear setback of an additional 25.5 square feet.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It will. Give me a second. Yeah. But that is helpful. The total is 25 square feet difference.
That's the difference from the existing and proposed, but that's not the variance request.
Right. I know that's not the variance, but...
Correct. Because they're having to seek this whole variance request.
Because they're taking that down.
They're demolishing the existing building and rebuilding, and that's the difference between the current conditions and the proposed.
Yeah.
Or the current code and the proposed condition.
Okay.
Dave?
So I'm guessing that the structure isn't, is probably wanting to be torn down and be replaced because of condition, the condition of the structure, but I'll ask the petitioner about that. If the petitioner came in and just said, "I want to put, put a second floor on this for an ADU," and would that be an alteration to a nonconforming structure if they didn't change the footprint?
Yes, I believe so.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Keep moving along.
No, I, that's...
I want to read some, but I, the answer to your question right now is yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for John? All right. If the petitioner is here, if you'd like to come forward, sign and state your name, you will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Joe Fazio. My wife and I, Lisa Patrell, are the owners of the house. I was likewise confused by the statistical analysis that was questioned a few moments ago. I'm going to leave it to Rob to make the presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions that I can. Thank you.
Rob Davis of Angelini Associates Architects, Ann Arbor. Quick couple corrections to the record. Rob Davis, not Rob Parker. And then, secondly, I think on the staff report, it noted that the three-foot easement was on the south side, but it's actually the north side of the property line that has, that we're meeting the three-foot easement for. And then, I think, I have a presentation, I don't know if it was received or uploaded.
It's downloaded on there. You downloaded it on, you see it?
Yep.
Yeah, it's in the packet also.
And we also have it in the packet.
Okay.
Give me one second. Let me cut off the CTN. Hopefully you can hear me right now. Tim, if you're listening, hopefully you are, the applicant, there we go. Magic.
Like magic.
Thank you, Tim.
You guys want to try a trial?
We don't want to, don't be acrobatic.
We'll just...
Yeah, there you go.
Later?
Yeah.
All right. You guys don't need the AI assistant for anything, right?
No, you can close that. There we go.
Okay, I think we're good to go, then.
Okay, so, let's see. So as you kind of discussed in your staff report, this is the project site located on Sewell and Wakefield. It's a corner lot in Eber White area. 1929 was built. Owners purchased it in 1989 and have been there 36 years now. Kind of doubled down in 2010 for this to be their forever home after, during a house fire that resulted in 11-month rendition or modification, renovation, remodeling project. So at that point, they kind of were, doubled down, this is going to be our forever home, and that was what they would like to do, and hopefully we'd like to stay there as long as they can. The goal is to create a living space atop the garage to serve as kind of like a secondary meeting space for their clients outside of their private residence. And then, as they get older, that would help then serve flexibility for care workers, health givers, to stay on site, family members to stay on site and help around the house. So here are existing photos. So I know to just, I'm going to just jump into your question about why not building directly on top of the existing footprint. That was the first choice, and that's probably why we got involved, was because this was going to require variance for the reason that we cannot simply build on top. It's, happens to be, there's a six-foot easement of DTE that is a easement on either side that basically is going to prohibit us from building directly on top of the existing structure. And additionally, the foundation, they're not full-depth footings. That would then prohibit also then any sort of just building on top without massive remodeling or reconstruction. So this is a line, or photo, you can kind of see down the line of the DTE wires and the easement that's kind of at hand. It's also existing, it's only two foot six from the west side of the property line, so to go up to your point, it's, it's not a conforming structure in that regard. Here is kind of in green, you're going to see where it's the open area that we can actually build in, the rear open yard, as we call it. The black outline is the existing garage. And then, what we have in blue is actually what would be allowable per the zoning code as it is written. So the area in red is what is already nonconforming structure. So of this entire garage, you could see it would no longer be able to be a two-stall garage if that were the case. And then, to make matters worse, we also have then the six-foot easement there. And forgive me, this survey's rotated, so north is actually to the left, but along that west boundary is also just making things a little more difficult. So, come on. So R1D zoning, so we have, another complication is that it's a corner lot with two front yard setbacks. So we have 25 foot on two directions, and then a 20-foot rear yard setback, which then limits the rear open yard space to begin with. However, as you see highlighted there with footnote A, this is also subject to the average setback rules.
30 seconds.
Oh, no. All right. So it's also 32 and a half feet is the average setback, so that's even pushing the rear yard setback even worse. So we'll jump into everything. So it's not a difficulty of choice. Basically, it's a peculiar and unique situation with the rear yard lots and the rear front yards being a corner lot. This is in a diagram of what would be proposed versus what the existing is, and then what would be without a variance, and you can see that, that's quite a drastic difference of a non, or conforming structure without a variance. This is the size and scale of what we're proposing to the existing neighborhood. Here is kind of the existing structure.
Let's see. Got to wrap it up.
Okay. We'll go to just the last slide here. So to sum it up, the area in orange is kind of what we're proposing to have as the variance request, 179.6 feet. The area in blue is the existing area that's being exceeded already, so it's a nonconforming structure. In short, all we're asking for is an additional 25 and a half square feet to give them the opportunity to live in their forever home. Thank you.
And I apologize about calling me by a different name.
That's okay. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions for the petitioner? Dave?
So the new structure, would that be further away from the line to accommodate the DTE setback?
Yes. So actually, what we are proposing is actually going to satisfy all of the setback requirements, including getting six feet from the west. We're going to be within the 32.57 feet from the south front, and then also three feet from the rear yard. And then, we're also proposing to meet the height limitation of no more than 21 feet average roof.
So you're actually correcting nonconformities on setbacks with the new structure?
Correct.
So it's not only, you're not only getting that, asking for that variance, but you're also correcting some existing setback nonconformities?
Yes. Everything is going to be entirely conforming, with the exception of the 35% threshold, which again is, because it's a peculiar lot, wouldn't otherwise be a problem.
And I do note that the owners have lived here for some time. Have you asked neighbors to weigh in on this?
There have been. I believe we've received a few letters of support. I believe John had received them, and then...
So I guess we'll, we'll note those as part of the public hearing. Thank you very much.
Yep. Any other questions?
Any other questions for the petitioner?
All right.
Thank you very much. If there's anyone else from the public who wishes to speak on this petition, please come forward. Please state your name for the record, sign in. You'll have three minutes.
I live at 1404 Wakefield Avenue. I'm standing here to oppose this request for variance. The applicants are asking for a massive exception to the rear open space law in order to build their proposed ADU. An ADU structure can only occupy 35% of the rear open space, but the applicants want to occupy more than 61% of the rear open space. That is 75% more than, more space than is allowed. The applicants have not made a compelling case, in my view, for such an enormous variance. The applicants have demonstrated no need for the proposed ADU structure. One of the applicant's claims, and this seems to be the primary point of the variance, is she wants to run a home counseling business from the proposed detached ADU. But the applicant doesn't need a detached ADU to run her business from the property. The applicants have many other options. The first floor of the applicant's four-bedroom house could easily and cheaply be modified to create a workspace that is entirely separate from the rest of the house. For instance, a wall could be built across this part. This is the family room. There's an addition that was built. A wall could be built here. This is a separate entrance, exterior entrance. So people who came to the counseling business could enter and leave the building without going into the living space. The resulting space would be separate from the main house. Also want to point out that this, this is, I live over here, and this is where the proposed ADU would be. The applicants are not proposing to do a, to a, seek a variance for a building here or here, or a modification of their house. They're, they're seeking to do it here. Why not here or here? Because this would cut, this would cut sightlines, this would cut light, this would, this would affect, adversely affect their living situation in this house. But if they build this two-story unit next to our house, it will adversely affect us. It'll affect our quality of life. Alternatively, the applicants could reconfigure or expand their existing house to construct an attached ADU inside the house. The applicants can't build an attached ADU anywhere on the lot without violating many ordinances, laws, and regulations. But it appears that they may be able to build an attached ADU inside the house without any need for the variances that are required for a detached ADU. Finally, without making any modifications to their house, the applicants could operate their business from within their existing large house where only two people live. No variance should be granted here because the difficulties the applicant's site are self-imposed. In 1995, the applicants built this substantial addition on their house. It's a two-story addition. The addition consumed nearly the remaining buildable area of the lot. Now applicants complain there's nowhere to build, but they built out on the lot the way that it is. The problem is their own creation. The arguments I made here are laid out in more detail in documents that we furnish to you. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Leslie Ford, and I also live at 1404 Wakefield. No substantial justice would result from allowing this variance. The proposed structure would offer no public benefits. It would be used solely for a private business. The structure would result in roughly 2,500 square feet of living space for only two people. This does not serve the goals of high density. It does exactly the opposite. The ADU ordinance was intended to provide more housing for people. The applicant's ADU will not create any housing. It will be used for a private business and for hypothetical, speculative, future uses which may or may not ever come to pass. Property owners are only entitled to a reasonable use of their property. They are not entitled to the greatest use, or the highest possible use, or every use they might desire. The applicants have requested an exception to only one ordinance. However, several other ordinances, laws, and regulations would be violated by the proposed structure. The applicants can't build the proposed ADU without getting a variance for each of the ordinances that would be violated. Some other ordinances and regulations that would be violated include the following. First, local ordinances require six feet between the house and the proposed structure, but the space between the proposed ADU and the existing house would be only four feet three inches. This presents, presents a fire and safety hazard. So here's the residence, here's the proposed structure. The space between is four feet three inches. It's supposed to be six feet, and I think you saw that, too, in the photos that John In addition, DTE regulations require that buildings be at least 15 feet from the electrical wires, but the ADU would be only about six feet from the wires. DTE regulations also state that no permanent structures can be built in DTE six-foot utility easement, but the proposed structure would have a permanent brick wall and a fenced-in area for garbage bins that would extend well into DTE's easement. Applicants may argue that by situating the proposed structure about three and a half feet further from our lot line than the existing garage, and thereby resolving some of the nonconformities of the previous garage, this helps the city. But this ignores the fact that the new structure, as planned, would have a larger footprint, an additional story, and extend further toward the front setback. Any benefit obtained by building the new structure three and a half feet further from the lot line would be substantially outweighed by the enormous size of the variance needed to build the proposed structure, and by the increased occupation of the rear, the rear yard.
30 seconds.
The ordinances also require a three-foot setback at the rear lot line, and no permanent structures can be built in the rear required setback area. I'm sorry, in the required setback area. The brick wall and fences in the garbage area appear to violate the three-foot setback requirement, but applicants have not provided enough information in their drawings to determine whether that is so or not. whether that is so or not.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this petition? Is there, if there's anyone remotely, please press star nine or use the raise hand button.
Am I able to address some other points as a living in the neighborhood?
If we have questions, we'll ask you to come back up. There are no callers. All right, thank you, Courtney. Uh, we did receive some communication on this petition. Um, we received the information, uh, outlining the objections from Leslie Ford. We also received a letter of opposition from the homeowners at 1406 Wakefield Avenue, as well as a letter of support from 1408 Wakefield. And with that, the public hearing is closed, and we're in discussion. Everyone's clearly deep in thought. So John, I'll ask you, maybe you know, maybe not. The comments that were made about the separation between the house and the garage being six feet, and it's only four and some change, is that something that's reviewed as part of the building permit? Is that something that's reviewed as part of zoning compliance? Is that an actual standard that the city enforces?
I'm, I'm not aware of that, uh, code requirement. It's not in the zoning ordinance, the UDC. It's not a, a code requirement for zoning. And also, if, the only one that I'm aware of is fire separation requirements for building code. And so when you have two structures that are five feet or less to one another, or five feet or less to a lot line, the exterior of the building will be, have to be constructed of fire-rated materials.
Okay.
But that's not something that-
But it'll be something reviewed as part of the building permit review?
That would be addressed with the building permit, not, not the zoning review.
Thank you. Sorry, we're in discussion. Maybe. Christina?
I have a question. Did the applicant, um, talk through any option that they explored to minimize, or actually to just push the garage up to have a shared wall with the residents?
I didn't have any discussions with the applicant about that. If you want to call the-
Sure.
Representative up here, I guess you could ask him that, but I, yeah, I didn't have any discussions.
Yeah, I'd like to know. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, the primary reason is that ADU needs to be separate on the site as part of, I believe, the zoning code, as opposed to if you're having two buildings.
You can, actually, you can have three different types of ADUs. There can be a detached ADU, an addition to an existing structure, or one within the interior. Say, um, like if someone converts their basement to an ADU. So you have three different kinds, an interior, an addition, and a standalone detached.
So then the other iterations, so there is a, in order to get access to the backyard, there is an existing alley that you saw in the previous photos. So it was about preserving that access to the backyard. And then there was also just like the fact that it's a garage, and then also serving some privacy between the house and then the client access space. Was the other consideration of trying to create a little more privacy, but-
Privacy from?
From the homeowners' living quarters versus like if they're going to have counseling sessions with clients, client meetings on the second floor, um, when they're using that for that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Dave?
This is a problematic one for me. And that being that we do have pretty strict standards that we want to try to meet as much as we can, and I'm, I'm having difficulty doing that in this case. And one thing I'd like to say is these corner lots, we've seen them time and again here at the zoning board, and they always give, give us problems because they have two large setbacks for two front yards, and, um, it creates a lot of problems. I mean, I would say for people that can look at our zoning standards, maybe one cure for this in the future could be to allow consideration of open space on the entire parcel to, when there's a second front yard, to reduce the amount of rear front, rear yard that needs to be open. But that's for, that's a policy change that we don't have right here. Um, it's, it's a difficult situation. It's, I like the fact that you're resolving some of the setback issues, but I think I'm going to have to vote against this unless I can be persuaded by some of my colleagues here on the zoning board.
Yes, would I be able to know, just in addition to the front yard setback, it's also the average front setback for the neighboring properties, which then takes away 130 feet of rear open yard, which then equates to like 50 square feet of buildable space. So that's also kind of entering what we would like to do in order for them to have a place that they can live in forever.
I'd like to add that the averaging setback is something that is always presenting problems to me as a member of the zoning board. And I frequently argued, and I've gone and looked at sites and taken a look down the street and seen what we have, and then I look at what could be reasonable in terms of the actual zoning code. If the zoning code says 25 feet, and somebody else down the street is at 25 feet or close to 25 feet, and then we have people set back greater distances, and then we create this, uh, averaging thing, but that's another problematic part of our code that I've argued against in particular cases. I can't do that, you're not asking for a front yard variance, so I can't do that here. So I'm ready to make a motion if anybody wants to chime in? Or not? Okay.
No other discussion? All right, go ahead, Dave. Thank you.
Uh, zoning, ZBA 25 dash 0032, 520 Soul Boulevard. In accordance with the established standards for approval, the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants a variance of 179.6 square feet from section 5.16.6D, accessory uses and structures. If granted, the variance will allow a two-story detached garage with an ADU and accessory dwelling unit above to exceed the allowable 35% rear open space requirement for accessory buildings and structures. The maximum allowed building footprint in the rear open space on this corner lot is 241 square feet. The proposed two-story garage ADU will have a footprint of 420.6 square feet in the rear open space.
Thank you, Dave. We have a motion, we have support. Drew, thank you. Christina?
No.
Patty?
No.
Drew?
No.
I also vote no. Dharma?
No.
Julie?
No.
Dave?
Devarde, no.
The request is denied. Moving on to petition, ZBA 25 dash 0025, 601 Mary Court. John?
Please express some patience with me and my brief explanation. This is seven properties, but it's basically one project. All seven properties are owned by one owner. They're asking for very similar variance requests on all of them, a couple minor different requests, and I'll go over those. But we're going to just go through one presentation, and then I'll read each one separately, and then you can vote on them separately, but I'm not going to do seven slide presentations, and it's all the same. So bear with me while we go through this. 601 ZBA 25 dash 0025, further addressed as 601 Mary Court. David Lewis, representing the property owner, has requested a variance of 18 feet from section table, excuse me, from table 5.17 dash 1, single-family residential dwelling districts. If granted, the variance will allow the existing residents to be demolished and construction of a new three-story, six-bedroom dwelling unit to be located 12 feet from the rear lot line. The minimum required rear yard setback for the R4C district is 30 feet. The 2,308 square foot non-conforming parcel does not meet the minimum 8,500 square foot lot requirement for the district. The property is zone R4C, multiple-family dwelling district. The non-conforming lot is permitted to use the R1C district dimensions per section 5.32.3, non-conforming lot of the Unified Development Code. The subject property is located on the east side of Mary Street. Hoover Street is to the south, and State Street is to the east of Mary Court. The home was built as part of an eight group, eight-property group of homes. The homes were constructed in approximately 1901. The subject residence is approximately 1,120 square feet in size. A private drive separates the four homes to the north and, and south, and, excuse me, a private drive separates four homes to the north and four homes to the south. The owner also owns 603, 604, 605, 607, and 608 Mary Court. The property owner plans on demolishing all the structures, as I've previously said, and building a new three-story, six-bedroom, single-family rental house. The new residence at 601 Mary Court will have a kitchen and living area on the first floor, and three bedrooms on each of the second and third floors. The homes will have a basement that will not be converted into habitable space. If you'll turn your attention to the monitors, you'll see the zoning map before you. It's highlight, the subject property is highlighted in blue, and then directly to the east, you have the other four properties, and then to the south, you have the other four. And this house right here, this property right here, which is, I believe it's 602 Mary Court, is not part of tonight's proposal. The next slide is the area map showing surrounding properties and existing conditions. And the next slide is the zoomed-in aerial photo of the subject properties, the four, the four to the north and three to the south. And like I said, it's got a private drive that goes down the center. You do have a drive to the north that's a shared driveway with this 921 Mary Street property. Um, and there's some parking back here, but most of it is on-street parking. You do have a, um, alleyway on the east side of this, uh, of these properties that runs north and south. The next slide is the survey that was submitted by the applicant, and you see that 602 has been excluded from the survey. And you see the four, uh, seven properties and their, um, current conditions and how they are situated mostly. They're all going to be needing rear yard setbacks, and the two here on the east are going to need side yard setback variances. The next slide shows the, um, 601 Mary Court, and this is the existing two-story home, which is to be demolished. Next slide shows, um, a, the basement, I believe this is. And the next slide shows the proposed first floor of the structure, uh, to be built, and then the second floor and the third floor, and you see the six-bedroom home. These are the elevations that are, were submitted by the applicant, and what the proposed homes will be, all look like, I think they're all going to be built to, almost the exact same specifications, they're all going to look the same. Um, I only have one set of, um, elevation drawings, so every one is going to be the same. And the architect can, uh, delve into that a little bit as well. You see the side profile of these homes, and this is the rear, and that's the other side of the proposed homes. You see the gable roof, uh, with a dormer in the center. These are the photos that I took at my inspection. You see the private drive down the center separating the two rows of houses. And this is 601 and 603 Mary Court. This is 605 Mary Court. This is 607 Mary Court. This is on the other side, the south side, this is 604 Mary Court, 606 Mary Court, and 608 Mary Court. This is the alley that I just discussed that runs to the east of these properties. And this is the, uh, looking back towards the properties on the other side, from the alley. And this is looking down the alley at 608. Some parking between the buildings. More of the same behind 608. And that's all the photos I have for you, and I can take any questions that you have at this time.
Thank you, John. Questions for staff? No questions. All right. Oh. Go ahead, Dharma.
Sorry, I guess I'm trying to understand, because these properties are being considered together, and why is Siri coming up? Sorry. Is the variance across all of them, or for each individual one?
Each individual lot will require a separate variance.
And a new structure will be placed to replace each structure?
They're going to demolish each structure.
And replace it with one?
Yep, so they're existing, uh, four-bedroom homes, I believe, right now, single-family, and this can be replaced with a single-family, three-story, six-bedroom home.
Gotcha, okay.
But when they tear this down, these lots are so small, you know, that some of them are 1,900 square feet, 2,000 square feet, they can't meet the setbacks. So once you tear it completely down, they're existing non-conforming, they can remain, but when you tear it down, the new construction has to meet, so that's the requirement for the variance of the rear yard.
Okay, thanks.
Julie?
So there was a proposal for Mary Court in 2024, right? A PUD?
Yes, that was a PUD.
And is that just defunct now?
It's been withdrawn.
Okay.
Dave?
So could they do alterations to non-conforming structures on these?
That's a consistent question. You keep asking me tonight. They could, they could do a third story, straight up.
Any other questions for John? All right, if the petitioner's here, if you could please come forward, sign in, state your name for the record, you will have five minutes. I'll leave it up to you if you want to address all of them now, or do them one at a time.
Good evening. My name is Brad Wilkinson. My wife and I own these seven houses down on Mary Court. Uh, we bought those in 2018, and, uh, we're very fortunate to own these properties, um, and we just want to make them better. And we want to make them a little bigger, and that's what we're here to do tonight, is present our application in person. David Lewis is our architect, and he'll do most of the talking. I just wanted to emphasize a couple points on this. Basically, we have seven four-bedroom houses- Basically, we have seven four-bedroom houses. And we want to turn those into seven six-bedroom houses, thereby increasing the density by 50% or 28 to 42. They're basically the same footprints. There's no reduction in green space or open space here. And we think the architecture retains kind of the campus Burns Park architecture style that already exists in the neighborhood.
All right.
Just hold on a second. Wait till they're all done, and then we'll do questions.
I can restart his time. So if he has a question for him, I should go with him.
Well, I'd like to ask the owner.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So one of my colleagues said that there had been a PUD request that had been withdrawn. And I'm wondering, what was the reason for going this route instead of the PUD route?
Well, we got rejected on the PUD. I'll say we got rejected on the PUD. Their two requirements were, it was a little different structure than what we're proposing here, a lot different structure. But it was rejected because we couldn't, we were required to get written approval from the neighbors on the north and the neighbor at 602. And as nice as those folks are, and we talk with them a lot, they're worn out with all the construction going on in Ann Arbor.
And to the north is Benjamin Street.
Just the lot, just directly north.
North.
The neighbor on the north, so the backyard.
On Mary Street.
911.
Oh, okay.
Mary Street.
Gotcha.
His name is Mr. Shaw.
And I had asked our zoning coordinator if you could do an alteration to a non-conforming structure. And I'll ask the architect to speak to the rationale for going this route as opposed to the alteration for a non-conforming structure.
Okay.
Any other questions for the owner? Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Lewis. I'm with Lewis Greenspan Architects, and I am the architect for the project. I want to first emphasize that, you know, the owner of these seven properties loves the character of Mary Court. And there's a lot of things anyone could build on these seven lots, especially if they were interested in combining them into one. And Brad really wants to keep the character of Mary Court, which I think is very nice. You know, these homes are old. You know, they're over 100 years old. And they're, you know, not in great condition. Brad has not owned them for that long. And I think the previous owner did not necessarily take as good of, you know, care of them as they could have. So the quality of construction, the quality of the house will be significantly superior if it's new construction. And the basements will be nicer. They'll be drier. You know, the thermal performance of the envelope will be significantly better. You know, the carbon footprint of the homes will be significantly reduced. It's just, you know, the quality of the new construction is going to be far superior. And it's a worthwhile thing, a thing to do. You know, we all love old houses, but sometimes it's just, it's time for old houses sometimes to get torn down and new ones built. And as John mentioned, we're basically building new houses more or less in the same spot as where the existing homes are now. The, given the setbacks, you know, the buildable error in these lots is tiny. I mean, some of them are only like 11 feet deep. I mean, you build a house that's, you know, 20 feet by 11 feet, and that's all you can do. So variance, rear yard variance is required. I've purposely kind of relocated all the houses a little bit when it comes to the side yards. Right now, most of these houses don't have side yards that meet current zoning requirements. Where once we build new ones in the new proposed locations, all the houses, except for the two along the alley, will have the minimum required side yard setbacks. So the only setback we're asking for, for four of the seven houses, is just the rear yard. And the two that we're asking for a side yard variance are the two along the alley. And so the side yard reduction is along the alley. So it's not like we're going closer to another house. It's just going closer to an alley. So we're not really impacting anyone else at all with our reduced side yard. And I think that covers all the main points I wanted to bring up. But yeah, I think Brad's desire to maintain the character of Mary's Court is admirable. And I think it's going to be, you know, as much as it's, as everybody likes it now, I think it'll still be a very enjoyable space to be in. Any questions? Oh, did you want me to address the?
Sure. And I had one other simple question. The other question, other, I can tell right now the reason to not do the alteration is you move the lot lines a little bit. And you're also having, from the foundation up, I have personal experience, as I do in a lot of homes in these areas, since I grew up in this neighborhood. Those basements are wet. So when you say resolve some of the external envelope of the structures, I understand what you're speaking to by personal experience. The other question I had, so you've got seven, you're proposing seven individual structures. Would that be a phased development, where you do one at a time? Or would you pull them all down and do the building all simultaneously?
I don't know if that's been, that's probably a better question for Brad. I know we've talked about possibly doing all at the same time or possibly doing, you know, maybe all the ones on the north side at once and then the south side. Like phasing it, but I don't think, it wouldn't be phased like over years. I think it would be, you know, kind of one right after the others, my guess. I don't know if you have a different answer.
No, we would prefer to do them all at once and get them done in one year.
Any other questions for the architect? All right. Thank you very much. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this petition, now is your chance. Please come forward, sign in, state your. If you just want to all go now, and we'll just apply those comments across the board. But if you maybe state in your comments which property you're speaking to specifically, that would be helpful. Yes, you'll have three minutes each. Thank you.
And write your name down.
Oh, sorry.
And address.
Good evening. My name is Dahlia Gottlieb, and I'm a current resident of 608 Mary Court. I am writing to express my opposition to the proposal by Davis Lewis on behalf of the property owners to demolish the existing homes on Mary Court. First, removing these homes undermines housing affordability and tenant stability. Ann Arbor's fair housing principles and its provisions for relocation and assistance when leases aren't renewed exist precisely to prevent displacement and ensure equitable housing access. Allowing this demolition to proceed could set a troubling precedent and effectively bypass those protections. The plan would contribute to overcrowding and overpopulation in an area already struggling with limited space and resources. Rather than improving limited living conditions, this approach risks worsening them for future residents. Third, the project risks exacerbating parking congestion, which is already a known issue in this neighborhood. Increased density without appropriate infrastructure planning will only make the situation worse for both current residents and the surrounding community. Fourth, had we known there were any possibility that we would not be able to remain in our homes for the duration of our two years in law school, my roommates and I would have sought other housing options. We fully intend to renew our lease and will face significant hardship if we, along with other students on Mary Court, are forced to secure new housing at the same time. Finally, it's important to acknowledge the human costs. The stress of losing housing often with limited notice inflicts real emotional and academic harm on the students who rely on Mary Court as a stable home. Disruption of community ties and security can have lasting consequences that go beyond housing alone. For these reasons, I urge the City Planning Commission to reject this demolition proposal and to preserve the character of affordability and livability of Mary Court. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ally Visarian. I live at 608 Mary Court as well. I'm a second-year law student. Just moved into Mary Court, and I absolutely love it. But I just wanted to highlight that this is, they spoke of this as a low-density increase. But then, at the same time, talked about how there would be almost a 50% increase in residents. And this really doesn't preserve the character of Mary Court. First, with that amount of people, I feel like the Mary Court already has too many people, and we're not going to be able to live the way that we currently do. For instance, we have barbecues outside. We do other stuff outside. We already can't all fit. So I really don't think that the court can fit six-bedroom homes as opposed to four-bedroom homes. Not to mention the other buildings in the area. There's the large building on Packard and Division, the large dorms. I don't know the exact street, but kind of closer to the stadium. The whole area is just getting more and more and more people. And rather than continuing to overpopulate this place, maybe wait a few years, see how it goes before rushing into things. Especially as it relates to parking on Mary Court. They said that there's street parking. This area really does not have a lot of street parking. Every single other house around there also has eight bedrooms, six bedrooms, and maybe one parking spot outside. Mary Court currently has one parking spot per house. I don't understand how they're going to change the lot lines here and still preserve that one parking spot. But I know for me, I'm lucky to have amazing roommates who will take me to Trader Joe's. But if I wanted to go by bus, it would take 35 minutes each way. So if you have six people in one home with one parking spot, it just becomes really not very feasible. And I know, like these other students, I want to take advantage of everything this university has to offer. I don't want to be spending two hours of my day just trying to go get groceries, because we can't fit more than one car here. I think lastly, it's important to note that this is one of the few areas in Ann Arbor that's still around, where there's a bunch of different four-bedroom homes that undergrads and grad students can live in. There's 18,000 grad students on this campus, but most of the housing is like six-bedroom, eight-bedroom. So it mostly goes to undergrads.
Thirty seconds.
25-year-olds don't usually want to live in those homes. So I love living with all these undergrads and getting to meet them and have, building that community. And if you took this away by putting in six bedrooms, I think you would just ruin it for grad students as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jaclyn Blunderman. I'm also a resident at 608 Mary Court. I'm also a second-year law student. I'll keep this brief. I second what those before me have said in terms of appealing this for the same reasons. And if you were to approve a permit, I would respectfully request that any plans to demolition the houses on Mary Court be approved the summer or fall of 2028, as most of the students will have, or pretty much all the students on that court will have graduated by then. As my friends that I live with mentioned, it's really hard to find housing in Ann Arbor, especially affordable housing, especially for us right by the law school, for them, right by Central Campus. And getting to live right by the gym, like just kind of in campus, but still be able to afford it is such a great opportunity. The people I know that are paying the same that we are live at least a mile away and all have cars. That's something that most of us don't have. So really, this is about, you know, taking away housing from students. And I just don't think it makes sense to demolish houses that people are living in and were planning to live in for multiple years, because when we signed the leases, this wasn't on the table for us. And yeah, that's really all I wanted to say. But thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Don't worry, I'm the last law student.
All right. Hello, my name is Frankie. I'm originally from Seattle. I'm also the daughter of a city planner. And I studied urban geography in college. And I mention that because every single thing I learned in undergrad about good public space is present in Mary Court. There's a porch culture, as odd as that sounds, facilitated by the fact that despite the car presence in some of the photos that you've seen, nobody typically parks in the middle of the court. This isn't because we have tons of parking options elsewhere, as a lot of us have mentioned and will continue to mention. In fact, the photos of the parking behind 608, that isn't accessible to us. That belongs to the property right behind us. We don't park in the middle of the court, because we want it to be a third space. We want it to be a place where community members can come together. We want it to be a place, as has been indicated, where students who are pursuing different courses of study can build community. I mean, I remember when we, the law students, kind of first, the first few weeks we moved in, how many of the young people you see in front of you today came to us and said, hey, if we're ever being too loud, like let us know. We want you to be able to study. I don't know about you, I would never have done that in undergrad. This, like, this area, this community is really, really special to the people that live there. It is really unique compared to anything else I've seen in Ann Arbor. One of my favorite things about Ann Arbor that I've discovered since living here is the use of alleys to sequester parking away from public space. I think that's really cool. I've never lived in a place like that. And when I hear about these developments, I understand that there is a need for more housing. Like, I get that, that's a problem in a lot of places. But what's really the point of adding a few more bedrooms if it does come at the cost of the character of the street? I do not see any other way for this plan to go forward that doesn't involve cars ending up in the middle of the street and that third space being destroyed. It's just not practical. It's, there's, like, we're, I mean, we're going to harp on parking a lot. But like, that's, it's a big issue. And there's, the porch culture that I described is partially based on the fact that we all take great pride in living here. Our, you know, our porches are decorated, we're tidy, we're respectful. I can count on one hand the number of times I've seen litter on the street, which is kind of crazy in like a high undergrad area. People take a lot of pride in living here. I mean, we're tenants. We do not have the same property interests in this property as the owners do. And we respect that and we understand it. But I hope it shows this board how important this space really is, because we're not just asking you to preserve it for us. We're asking you to preserve it for all the students that are looking for a community like this. Well, they spend their undergraduate years here. Then this new construction would not significantly benefit the city. Oh, crap. Okay. Skip to the end. All right. I'm ending with a quote from one of my favorite urban people, and I assume some of yours, Jane Jacobs, who said, "Lawley, unpurposeful, and random as they may appear, sidewalk contacts are the small chain from which a city's wealth of public life may grow." I know this is not the type of public space that she was talking about at all, but the principle still rings true. To allow this new construction would destroy the opportunity for Mary Court to remain a gathering place for students yearning for human connection in increasingly individualized world and city. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm writing my name down. I would just like to say, as someone who recently moved in, the construction in Ann Arbor right now is currently just unimaginable and awful. And especially on Mary Court, by the gym, wherever you're going, it takes such an unbelievably long time to get around anywhere. And a project like this will just exacerbate it to an extreme degree. And I think even if you're looking at the construction on State Street, if you're looking on the construction right by, I think doing this project right now just does not make any sense at all. I also briefly just want to talk about adding an additional floor. When you're thinking about six people living in a house, when they're all around a similar age, that is very, very difficult to do. And it's very especially difficult, as someone said before, for grad students. I'm from New York. I'm used to people try to crowd and fit as many people as I can into one location. And I understand how people want more, they kind of, well, it's an economic incentive. They want more people to be able to rent out to. But in the long term, it ends up really hurting the tenants. There's not enough room to even go around the house. Parking was already talked about. But this is just a kind of project that would really only benefit the owner of the property and would be a detriment to basically every single person that would live there. I have a lot of people I know that live in these seven-bedroom houses, and it's incredibly challenging. In addition to the fighting, all of that kind of thing that happens, it's just, it's not an enjoyable experience. And you want housing to be kind of something that you come home to, you're allowed to relax, you're allowed to do whatever. And that's really difficult when you're having six other people running around the house trying to, and that doesn't even count people that have. trying to... and that doesn't even count people that have others staying over with their house. And just looking at the issue that's going to happen, I think should be taken into account. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Aruna Ma Paul, and I live at 604 Mary Court. I'm here today with representatives from almost all of the current Mary Court tenants to express our strong opposition to the proposed demolition of our homes. Mary Court is not just a group of student rentals, it's a community. It's a small, close-knit court where neighbors actually know each other, where people gather for semestral music festivals, tailgates, and other events. Before I even lived there, I came to those events and I fell in love with the sense of connection and belonging on Mary Court. For so many students, Mary Court is where friendships and memories are made. And replacing these homes with new developments would erase the character and culture that makes Mary Court unique. Beyond the loss of identity, this proposal would cause real hardship for current residents. Finding affordable housing in Ann Arbor, especially August leased, four-person leases with parking, is already nearly impossible, especially on such short notice. None of us would have signed a lease on Mary Court had we known about the possibility of demolition then. Many of us are out-of-state students preparing for grad school applications, the MCAT, the LSAT, and being forced to move in the middle of that would cause tremendous academic, emotional, and financial strain. For me personally, this would be my third move in three years. Last year, my previous apartment collapsed, and I had to relocate unexpectedly. My family lives 10 hours away, and so I would have to manage everything alone, finding a place, paying for storage over the summer, moving without a car. And I know that there are others on the court that share the same situation as me. And this is exactly the kind of tenant instability that the city's housing values are meant to prevent. I know there are others on the court that share the situation as well. And on top of that, there's already constant construction surrounding Mary Court. We deal with daily noise, traffic delays, congestion, and limited access. Adding yet another major project here would make that worse for both students and other residents around the area. Ann Arbor doesn't need more construction that pushes out existing communities in favor of overpriced, nicer, newer housing that students are unlikely to be able to afford anyway, which is important due to the location of the court near the IMSB and Central Campus. The demolition of Mary Court is not about creating more housing. It's about displacing the people who already live there and depend on the affordability and the livability of the court and replacing affordable, functional homes with expensive units that...
Thirty seconds.
...exploit not serve students. The minimal benefit proposed by the property owner is not genuine, nor is it worth all the issues and distress that would arise with the demolition of the court. So I ask you to please reject this demolition proposal, preserve the character, affordability, and livability of Mary Court, and in doing so, please help protect the community values that make Ann Arbor such a special place to live. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Samantha Paris. I'm one of the residents at 604 Mary Court. I want to come up here and just like all of my friends and courtmates, reject this proposed demolition. I wanted to mostly come up here and discuss overcrowding and affordability. This area already wasn't made for as many people who are living there, even as there are now. Rezoning it wouldn't benefit the people who actually live there. It would stifle them even more. Mary Court remains one of the last corners in Ann Arbor that actually feels like Ann Arbor and not just an investment project. And while Ann Arbor is looking for higher density in deep-city areas, it isn't and it shouldn't be down on the residential streets south of the university. Mary Court's human-scale design and historic layout overall are part of what defines the neighborhood overall. Replacing it with higher-density units would undermine that identity. And as well as this, the proposed development would objectively strain the already unacceptably limited parking that everyone else has been discussing. Increasing housing density also isn't just about having more boxes to put people in. If we're doing this for the people actually living in these places, it's about having actually livable space where the people who end up living in these places can maintain their dignity. It's dehumanizing to be shoved into a box, especially those as expensive as Ann Arbor allows them to be. For me, finding Mary Court and being able to live here was more than just luck, it was relief. Personally, once I was forced out of the dorms, as most students are after their freshman year, I struggled to find affordable housing that didn't drain my finances or put me in a basement. And this was one of the only places that felt fair or human. There is nothing like Mary Court, and one of the only other places like it was recently torn down as well. Students are being taken advantage of constantly when it comes to housing prices. And if the buildings are to be demolished and rebuilt, the prices subjected on the residents will inevitably force me out of one of the only places left that is affordable and I will be able to call a home. The thought of losing that and to ultimately be priced out or displaced for yet another more modern complex feels wrong not just for me, but for everyone who has made this small court a home. Mary Court doesn't need to be remade, it needs to be respected. It is historical, it is over 100 years old, and that has a lot of value. I, back at home, I'm from the East Coast, I live in a house that is over 100 years old. And while it has its flaws, its character outweighs any of those. There's beauty in leaving something as it is, in honoring the uniqueness, history, scale, and character that leads...
Thirty seconds.
...that its residents always have and actively continue to find significant value in. Preserving it not just honors its residents, but the remaining tradition and spirit of Ann Arbor itself overall. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm sure we all will continue to say just this.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Caitlin. I'm a current tenant of 604 Mary Court. I'm not going to take up too much of your time. I think a lot of my courtmates over there have made some really good points about affordability, parking, and overcrowding. I know a couple people have mentioned that obtaining housing for students is already very difficult, but I'd like to add some context to this. So generally, finding housing for undergraduates and graduates needs to start in September because despite Ann Arbor Legislature's best efforts in making the lease signing in March, the waitlists for signing those leases start in September and at the beginning of the school year. So with the approval of this project, this would displace all of these lovely faces sitting next to me, as well as many more that were not able to show up tonight or were not able to be here. So because it's late October already, we would be very far down on this waitlist, forcing us to probably not find housing in a house south of campus, but instead reside in one of the very overpriced high-rises that can range from upwards of $1,500 a month for rent. Additionally, demolishing these houses would take away seven homes and therefore 28 spots for other students that also need these affordability... these affordable prices in rent. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Elodie. I'm a resident at 603 Mary Court. And I'm also going to keep it brief because everyone has mostly said what I wanted to say. But just to add on to that, and I think that the proposed plan is good in theory in adding more housing in this area, but unfortunately, it's just not realistic for the neighborhood. Like everyone has mentioned, parking is already insane. Like, if any more than one person in each house has a car, you're parking five blocks away just to be able to park your car for free, even if your house does technically come with a parking spot. And I think Ann Arbor's housing market is already oversaturated with costly new developments. And the majority of students in these areas can't afford that kind of living. So losing these affordable houses, and I have to assume that a new development in this area would cost more than what we are paying in rent. And I just don't think that is realistic for student housing.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Roman Smith. I'm a resident of 602 Mary Court, which is the only house in this block that is not under consideration for demolition. I think that demolishing these seven houses around the house I currently reside in would completely destroy the character of this court. There were a lot of comments made by the owner about retaining the character and the value of this court, but I think a lot of that comes from the historical presence and value of these houses. And replacing seven of the eight houses with new, modern high-rises would completely imbalance the aesthetic of the entire area. And it would just... it would not be the same as it was. Mary Court is a very popular and well-known location among students and non-students in this area. Putting this area under construction would destroy a lot of the houses around, not just in this court. You can see on this picture up here how close the houses on the south side of Mary Court are to these bottom four, the even-numbered houses on Mary Court. None of us here are from those, and we know that those houses would be very largely affected by this as it consumes their living area with construction, the noise, and the debris that comes with it. A lot of the people in this area already have to deal with the construction on State Street and the construction in the dorm that completely takes up a lot of our parking on the roads, as has been mentioned by almost everybody before this, but also creates an unhealthy environment in the area. I've experienced problems with walking just to my house down State Street, getting dust in my eyes, irritating my eyes, destroying some of my contact lenses even. I know people in my house even that have a lot of allergies. This has affected them, they've gotten... They cough, they're full of dust. It's just not a healthy environment. Destroying these houses would not only create an even more healthy environment, but also just worsen what's already going on. A lot of the other things that I have to say have been said by everyone else, but I think they're worth mentioning again. The owner mentioned that this property would be... This change to the property would be a 28 to 40-ish, or even 50% change in density, an increase in density. As everyone has said before me, this area is not equipped in the slightest to handle that.
Thirty seconds.
We have very limited parking, and most of the people in the court do not have cars. The space in the court is already quite full as it is. It's a good full with the amount of people that we have. If we added, what would be, 12, 16 more people to this area, that's too many people. It's overcrowded, just like a lot of the other places in Ann Arbor. And it completely devalues the amount of space each person should be able to have in their home and neighborhood, and also takes away from the open, happy environment of the court. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak on this petition? If there's anyone remotely, please press star nine or use the raise hand button.
There is no call.
Thank you, Courtney. We did receive communications. It's a letter of objection from Lauren Canty, a letter of opposition from Delia Gottlieb, a letter of... It's a letter of opposition from Lily Gottlieb, a letter of opposition from Aruna Ma Paul, a letter of... Opposition from Morgan McCosky, a letter of opposition from Willa Cornilly, a letter of opposition from Samantha Paris, a letter of opposition from Caitlin Lutton, a letter of opposition from Demique Krewthers... And I apologize if I'm mispronouncing anyone's name. A letter of opposition from Marie Gilbert, a letter of opposition from Elodie Mallory. I believe that's all of them. With that, the public hearing is closed, and we are in discussion. Dave.
I have to say, watching these young people come up today, one after the other, brings tears to my eyes. I'm so proud to have grown up in this community and have lived among people like this who come up and speak out at a public forum like this. I want to note personally, my wife lived on Brown Court back in the 1980s when Brown Court was under a proposal to be converted to all restaurants. We still know people that lived on that court that we built community with that now live in Chicago, or Baltimore, or New York. The community you speak to is very moving and means a lot. That said, I do want to say that we're a zoning board. We're not here to consider a demolition permit. We're here to consider a variance. By our rules and regulations, that's what we're here to consider. To that, I'd like to speak... I look at the determination worksheet we have, and I'll quickly read off some of the considerations. "There is a practical difficulty that is exceptional and peculiar to the property that results from conditions that do not exist generally throughout the city." No. "The practical difficulty which will result from a failure to grant the variance includes substantially more than mere inconvenience or inability to attain a higher financial return." No. "Allowing the variance will result in substantial justice being done, considering the public benefits of the zoning ordinance, the practical difficulties that will be suffered by a failure to grant the variance, and the rights of others whose property would be affected by allowing the variance." That's a maybe. But the speakers here tonight weigh strongly against substantial justice being done. "The conditions and circumstances of the proposed variance are not a self-imposed practical difficulty." No. "A variance shall be the minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land or structure." No. So the variance being requested by my reading, or understanding, or in my opinion, doesn't meet a single one of our standards. Additionally, the owner and architect have other options if they want to increase the use of their land by going with an alteration to a non-conforming structure, which does not have quite as stringent of a set of criteria to be met. So by denying this variance, we are not... If we end up denying it, and I'm going to vote no, we're not necessarily saying that there's not going to be a development there. There are other options that the owner and architect could pursue to develop this, to take down these properties as they are right now. And I just want to say that for the public record, but I will be voting no on this.
True.
As an undergrad here, I lived at 903 Mary, so I'm very familiar with this. And with a daughter who's a senior going through the same type of housing difficulties, I can empathize and appreciate you all coming out. I agree a lot with what David said in terms of the uniqueness of not only having this many people come, being new to the board, but also the area itself and the other alternatives that are there. It's given me a lot to think about.
Dama. Dharma?
Some of the things I'm thinking of, I'm hoping that my colleagues and our staff can help me think through. So when I look at what the dimensions, size requirements are for this, you know, I start thinking about what is the logic behind that. And to me, part of the logic behind it is how intensely can you develop the parcel for the given size? Normally, I feel like that's not something we really think about, because in these, usually when we're considering these, they're altering, altering an existing structure, and they don't own a bunch of parcels, and it doesn't seem reasonably to ask them to do it less intensively. But in this one, it seems like, and I don't know, but it seems like maybe there is an opportunity to rethink the parcel sizes even. Does that come into play at all in these considerations, when someone has seven contiguous parcels, and the parcels are non-conforming because they were drawn before the zoning, but now they're demolishing the whole site, basically? I don't know if I'm making any sense, but...
So I asked the question, and I'm not sure...
Sorry. So I'm thinking about the required lot, you know, the square foot lot requirements for this area are 8,500, and maybe that's too large, given today's standards, but 2,300 strikes me as rather small. So the difference there.
That's why they can be, by right, a single-family home.
Okay. So it is a corollary for intensity of development, basically, square, like the amount of square footage and what you're allowing on it.
Correct.
Yeah. So anyway, when I look at this, part of what I'm also thinking is that we're not just dealing with someone making an alteration to build another story on an existing structure, we're dealing with a property owner that owns seven parcels that are contiguous, and it just seems to me that they could be, could they alter the lot sizes? Have fewer lots that were the right size?
Could they come do a lot combination? I don't want to speak for the owner or the architect, but I mean, yeah, a lot combination is always possible.
To make a lot that meet the, to meet the standard?
But I don't know where you, how you'd be gaining in that.
Yeah.
Because for the size, you need...
It would take literally four of these lots to make a conforming lot.
Right. Okay. Ah, gotcha. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're still going to be getting, you might be getting, without looking at the code, you might get two or three units, but you're combining...
It doesn't make any sense. Sure. Okay. Got it.
Units.
Yep. Thanks. Actually, I have a follow-up. So I mean, the one that you said that they, you said, Dave, when you were looking at this, and you were going down the list of the things that we consider, and I appreciate you doing so, you know, one of the things that you said no to is the conditions and circumstance of the variance are not a self-imposed practical difficulty. No. I don't understand how that's so clear-cut, and they're not really responsible for the lot sizes.
Well, people aren't responsible for having a corner lot either. They just happen to have one, right? I'm ready to read a resolution if other people want to weigh in, and I'm happy to wait.
Sorry, but this one is tough for me, because there's a lot of things that have been said here tonight that, that I agree with, but I don't think are necessarily germane to our discussion. So, the fact of the matter is, the property owner could reconstruct any of his houses to build exactly what he has there now, I think. No, he couldn't. Tell me what you could do.
He can do, he can do an alteration, but once you exceed 75% of the appraised value as determined by the building official, then you lose your non-conforming status. So they would have to do a cost analysis and prove that they're not exceeding that 75%. Like, we don't, we've had previously people, "Oh, I'll just do a demolition and leave the foundation, one wall up." We've had a couple of commercial buildings attempt that, and ended up, they had to do a site plane, because they were trying to avoid a site plane. But in something like this, like, could you tear off the roof and create a third floor? Yeah, I don't think that would exceed the 75%. Could you shore up the foundation and all that? It's something that would have to be determined by the building official, and it'd have to be an engineer report and all kinds of different obstacles that I don't even want to speculate on.
Okay. So anyway, it's hard for me to think through, because I guess I'm thinking through the things that, you know, we don't really control as a ZBA, and that could happen regardless, and the things that we actually do. But from what I'm hearing in this conversation, in point of fact, our granting this is what allows these to be demolished.
The owner has the right to demolish these, but it's just a matter of whether he can rebuild it with that variance.
Well, that's true.
And that's kind of where I want to get us back to on track, is are you going to grant a variance for these structures for the rear, for the rear setback, and the side setback on some of them? When I read them, I get to them. That's kind of the issue at hand.
Julie?
So we have a lot of buildings in the city that are non-conforming, and I don't know where I'm going with this. So I do think this is a little bit different when we see all of these in a row, and I know we've seen another one that came before us. And I think, I also struggle, because I love Mary Court, I think it's great, like, but from, from what we have to look at, I don't, is it a practical difficulty that's exceptional and peculiar to the property? Well, no, we have a lot of non-conforming buildings and a lot of non-conforming lots, so that one's hard. The practical difficulty, inability to attain a higher financial return, I mean, I think that is kind of where we're talking about, it's a higher financial return. So I don't know about that, but justice being done, I mean, maybe, and I worry about things like fire risk, and, I mean, some of these houses are really chopped up, and they're not always safe. Hopefully, they are all safe, but, you know, that, that can be an issue, and I don't, I don't know. I'm not helping. And it's, it's not self-imposed, I don't think, although, I mean, it is, when you buy these, and you buy seven of them, you should, there should be some due diligence as to if these are conforming or non-conforming properties. I think, I think I can see one person not knowing to do that if you're just buying a house you can afford, but when you're buying multiple houses, that seems somewhat more self-imposed to me. I think the minimum variance, I think we're, I mean, there's not a lot of room, so, they're not asking a whole lot, but it's still, I, I'm, thank you for letting me sort of talk through this, but I, it's, it's a tricky one. I think it's...
Dave?
I read through the five and came to knows on all of them. In terms of the minimum variance, that's relevant, but key to that is to make possible a reasonable use of the land or structure. Right now, as it is, there's a reasonable use, so it's being used reasonably. Additionally, the owner has other options for how to pursue this, and so I don't see the variance, I mean, anyway, I said I'm going to vote no with my reasons, and, but I, I really appreciate hearing everybody's point of view on this. It's a hard one for some people.
It's just a hard one, and I'm struggling with it, because I appreciate the owner's desire to upgrade the buildings, to make them a bit more sustainable, a bit nicer, a bit more modern, I guess, maybe a bit safer. But I'm struggling a little bit with the financial return requirement of our, of our standards, because it feels like if you're going to tear down a building that's there and build essentially a building in the same footprint, just with a couple more bedrooms or a couple more units, the only reason...
Bedrooms, yes.
The only reason to do that would be to increase your financial return. And as Dave mentioned, it's, I mean, it's not, it's an inconvenience, I mean, and there's other options. I think if you really wanted to get more bedrooms, you could alter these structures and add a third floor, and renovate the buildings as they sit now, and ultimately achieve the same goal. Is it as cost-effective or easy, maybe? I don't know, but it is possible. So that's kind of where I'm hung up.
And can we ask the architect if they looked at options to, yeah, sure, yeah, to, to expand the attic space? Just to see if it was viable?
Yeah, to answer your question, it is viable to, to add a, basically add a third floor to all the structures. It's, you know, you're still dealing with most of the building being, you know, over 100 years old, and you're not going to have, you know, as good of a structure and as good of a thermal envelope. But, and, and in terms of safety, someone mentioned, you know, with the, with the new location that we're proposing, there'll be a legal distance between each house where, where they are now, since they're kind of a little bit helter-skelter on each lot. So basically, so I think, you know, the safe, fire safety will be improved with the variance. And, and just to, you know, address the character a little bit, you know, and not that, you know, the current owner does not even want to do this, but I want to point out that, you know, a lot of owners out there, if they bought these seven, they would combine, going to Dharma's point, they would combine all seven lots and just build one big, tall building there. And so I want to stress the fact that, you know, the current owner's kind of bending over backwards not to do that, because that's kind of what, someone who's only interested in cash flow, it'd be a lot cheaper to build one building with seven units than seven houses. Any other questions?
Okay. Thanks. Thank you. Were there any other questions while he's up here?
I just wanted to make another statement, and then, I do want to say, I feel like the homeowner is making a responsible proposal to improve the properties and keep the character pretty much the same as it is. And I know that, and as I said, we're not here to approve or disapprove a demolition, we're here on the zoning issues. I'm going to vote no on the zoning issues, but I, I want people to know, I feel like the homeowner, or the property owner, is responsibly trying to improve the housing situation there. That said, I'm still going to vote no because of the zoning issues. And I'm ready to read the...
Are you ready for a motion? I think so.
And the question is, and I guess, should we do these individually or lump them together?
Individually, because they're all slightly different.
ZBA 25-0025, 601 Mary Court. "In accordance with the established standards for approval, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants a variance of 18 feet from the section table 5.17-1, single-family residential dwelling districts. If granted, the variance will allow the existing residents to be demolished and construction of a new three-story, six-bedroom dwelling to be located 12 feet from the rear lot line. The 2,308-square-foot non-conforming parcel does not meet the minimum 8,500-square-foot lot requirement for the district. The new residence is to be built per the submitted plans."
Thank you, Dave. We have a motion, we have support.
Yep.
Thank you, Drew.
No.
Drew? I also vote no. Dharma?
Yes.
Julie?
No.
Dave?
DeVar, do you know?
Christina?
Yes.
The request is denied. Moving on to, yes, ZBA 25-0026, 603 Mary Court.
David Lewis, representing the property owner, is requesting a variance of 18 feet from the section, why do I keep saying section, table 5.17-1, single-family residential dwelling districts. "If granted, the variance will allow the existing residents to be demolished and construction of a new three-story, six-bedroom dwelling to be located 12 feet from the rear lot line. The required rear setback for the R4C district is 30 feet. The 1,785-square-foot non-conforming parcel does not meet the minimum 8,500-square-foot lot requirement for the district. The property is owned R4C, multiple-family dwelling district. The non-conforming lot is permitted to use the R1C district dimensions per section 5.32.3, non-conforming lot of the Unified Development Code." And I've already given the presentation for that, so if you guys want to go ahead and go into discussion for this, or if there's anyone who wants to speak on it?
Anything new?
I don't have anything new, other than that same, the district, or the, the variance request is the same, the lot is smaller than the previous lot.
I'm willing to read the resolution, unless somebody wants to speak to it.
Yeah, it was going to be my question, do I have to do a public hearing, or can we say that the first public hearing was for all of the petitions?
You guys can do what you want.
We could ask if anybody in the public wants to speak to it.
All right. I will open the public hearing. If there's anyone that wishes to speak, otherwise, we'll carry all of the previous comments forward.
I think we said all that we were going to express.
Any remote participants?
There are no callers.
Great. Thank you, Courtney. The public hearing is closed, we're in discussion. Take it away, Dave.
ZBA 25-0026, 603 Mary Court. "In accordance with the established standards for approval, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants a variance of 18 feet from section table 5.17-1, single-family residential dwelling districts. If granted, the variance will allow the existing residents to be demolished and construction of a new three-story, six-bedroom dwelling to be located 12 feet from the rear lot, lot line. The 2,308-square-foot non-conforming parcel does not meet the minimum 8,500-square-foot lot requirement for the district. The new residence is to be built per the submitted plans."
Thank you, Dave. We have a motion, we have support.
Yep.
Thank you, Drew. Dharma?
Yes.
Julie?
No.
Dave?
DeVar, do you know?
Christina?
Yes.
Patty?
No.
Drew?
No.
I also vote no. The request is denied. Moving on to petitions, ZBA 25-0067, no, 27, 604 Mary Court. It's, yeah, 0027, 604, right? We just did 60, oh, no, yeah, we just did 603.
604 Mary Court. David Lewis, representing the property owner, is requesting a variance of 20 feet from the sec, uh, table 5.17-1, single-family residential dwelling districts. "If granted, the variance will allow the existing residents to be demolished and construction of a new three-story, six-bedroom dwelling to be located 10 feet from the rear lot line. The rear, the required rear setback for the R4C district is 30 feet. The 1,960-square-foot lot, square-foot non-conforming parcel does not meet the minimum 8,500-square-foot lot requirement for the district."
Thank you, John. Any questions? We'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone that wishes to speak, I'm assuming there are still no remote callers or participants?
There are still, no, there's no callers.
Excellent. Thank you, John. Any questions? We'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone that wishes to speak, I'm assuming there are still no remote callers or participants?
There are still no callers.
Excellent. Public hearing is closed. We're in discussion. Likely ready for a motion.
Motion, ZBA 25-0027, 604 Mary Court. In accordance with the established standards for approval, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants a variance of 20 feet from section table 5.17-1, single-family residential dwelling districts. If granted, the variance will allow the existing residents to be demolished and construction of a new three-story, six-bedroom dwelling to be located 12 feet from the rear lot line. The 2,308 square-foot non-conforming parcel does not meet the minimum 8,500 square-foot lot requirement for the district. The new residence is to be built per the submitted plans.
Thank you, Dave. We have a motion. Do we have support?
Yep.
Thank you, Christina. Drew.
No.
I also vote no. Dharma.
Yes.
Julie.
No.
Dave.
Devarde, no.
Christina.
Yes.
Patty.
No.
Request is denied. Moving on to petition, ZBA 25-0028, 605 Mary Court. John?
605 Mary Court. David Lewis, representing the property owner, is requesting a variance of 18 feet from table 5.17-1, single-family residential dwelling districts. If granted, the variance will allow the existing residents to be demolished and construction of a new three-story, six-bedroom dwelling to be located 10 feet... 12 feet from the rear lot line. The required rear yard setback for the R4C district is 30 feet. The 1,960 square-foot non-conforming parcel does not meet the minimum 8,500 square-foot lot requirement for the district.
Thank you, John. Any questions? All right. Open the public hearing. Anyone that wishes to speak? Seeing nobody, public hearing is closed.
There are no callers.
Thank you, Courtney.
Motion, ZBA 25-0028, 605 Mary Court. In accordance with the established standards for approval, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants a variance of 18 feet from the section table 5.17-1, single-family residential dwelling districts. If granted, the variance will allow the existing residents to be demolished and construction of a new three-story, six-bedroom dwelling to be located 12 feet from the rear lot line. The 2,308 square-foot non-conforming parcel does not meet the minimum 8,500 square-foot lot requirement for the district. The new residence is to be built per the submitted plans.
Thank you, Dave. Do we have support?
Yep.
Thank you, Drew. I vote no. Dharma.
Yes.
Julie.
No.
Dave.
Devarde, no.
Christina.
Yes.
Patty.
No.
Drew.
No.
Request is denied. Moving on to petition, ZBA 25-0029, 606 Mary Court. John?
606 Mary Court. David Lewis, representing the property owner, is requesting a variance of 20 feet from table 5.17-1, single-family residential dwelling districts. If granted, the variance will allow the existing residents to be demolished and construction of a new three-story, six-bedroom dwelling to be located 10 feet from the rear lot line. The 1,960 square-foot non-conforming parcel does not meet the minimum 8,500 square-foot lot requirement for the district.
Thank you, John. Any questions? We'll open the public hearing. Anybody that wishes to speak? Seeing no one, guessing there's still not any callers?
There are still no callers.
I really want someone to call in, like, just for the last one, just for fun.
Should I text my husband?
The public hearing is closed, and we are ready for a motion, I think.
Motion, ZBA 25-0029, 606 Mary Court. In accordance with the established standards for approval, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants a variance of 20 feet from section table 5.17-1, single-family residential dwelling districts. If granted, the variance will allow the existing residents to be demolished and construction of a new three-story, six-bedroom dwelling to be located 12 feet from the rear lot line. The 2,308 square-foot non-conforming parcel does not meet the minimum 8,500 square-foot lot requirement for the district. The new residence is to be built per the submitted plans.
Thank you, Dave. Do we have support?
Yep.
Thank you, Patty. Julie.
No.
Dave.
Devarde, no.
Christina.
Yes.
Patty.
No.
Drew.
No.
I also vote no. Dharma.
Yes.
The request is denied. Moving on to petition, ZBA 25-0030, 607 Mary Court. John?
607 Mary Court. David Lewis, representing the property owner, is requesting a variance of 18 feet from table 5.17-1, single-family residential dwelling districts. If granted, the variance will allow the existing residents to be demolished and construction of a new three-story, six-bedroom dwelling to be located 12 feet from the rear lot line. A one-foot side yard setback variance on the alley side, the east side of the property, is also being requested. The required rear yard setback for the R4C district is 30 feet, and the side yard requirement is 5 feet. The 1,915 square-foot non-conforming parcel does not meet the minimum 8,500 square-foot lot requirement for the district.
Thank you, John. Any questions? All right. At this point, we'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone who wishes to speak, now's your chance.
Caller in.
Breakout. All right. Public hearing is closed. We were ready for a motion.
Motion, ZBA 25-0030, 607 Mary Court. In accordance with the established standards for approval, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants a variance of 18 feet from section table 5.17-1, single-family residential dwelling districts. If granted, the variance will allow the existing residents to be demolished and construction of a new three-story, six-bedroom dwelling to be located 12 feet from the rear lot line. A one-foot side yard setback variance on the alley side, the east side of the property, is also being requested. The required rear yard setback for the R4C district is 30 feet, and the side yard requirement is 5 feet. The 1,915 square-foot non-conforming parcel does not meet the minimum 8,500 square-foot lot requirement for the district.
Thank you, John. Any questions? All right. At this point, we'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone who wishes to speak, now's your chance.
Caller in.
Breakout. All right. Public hearing is closed. We were ready for a motion.
Motion, ZBA...
You're doing great, Dave.
Pardon me?
You're doing great.
ZBA 25-0030, 607 Mary Court. In accordance with the established standards for approval, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants a variance of 18 feet from section table 5.17-1, single-family residential dwelling districts. If granted, the variance will allow the existing residents to be demolished and construction of a new three-story, six-bedroom dwelling to be located 12 feet from the rear lot line. Also, a one-foot side yard setback variance on the east alley side of the property is also being requested. The 1,915 square-foot non-conforming parcel does not meet the minimum 8,500 square-foot lot requirement for the district.
The new residence is to be built per the submitted plans. Thank you, Dave. Do we have support? Thank you, Christina. Julie.
Yes. Uh, no.
Everyone's getting delirious.
I knew I was going to do that one of these.
Dave.
Devarde, no.
Christina.
Yes.
Patty.
No.
Drew.
No.
I also vote no. Dharma.
Yes.
The request is denied. Last but not least, petition, ZBA 25-0031, 608 Mary Court. John?
608 Mary Court. David Lewis, representing the property owner, is requesting a variance of 26 feet from table 5.17-1, single-family residential dwelling districts. If granted, the variance will allow the existing residents to be demolished and construction of a new three-story, six-bedroom dwelling to be located 12 feet from the rear lot line. Also, a one-foot side yard setback variance on the east alley side of the property is also being requested. The 1,915 square-foot non-conforming parcel does not meet the minimum 8,500 square-foot lot requirement for the district. The new residence is to be built per the submitted plans.
Thank you, Dave. Do we have support?
Yep.
Thank you, Christina. Julie.
Yes. Uh, no.
Everyone's getting delirious.
I knew I was going to do that one of these.
Dave.
Devarde, no.
Christina.
Yes.
Patty.
No.
Drew.
No.
I also vote no. Dharma.
Yes.
The request is denied. Last but not least, petition, ZBA 25-0031, 608 Mary Court. John?
608 Mary Court. David Lewis, representing the property owner, is requesting a variance of 26 feet from table 5.17-1, single-family residential dwelling districts. If granted, the variance will allow the existing residents to be demolished and construction of a new three-story, six-bedroom dwelling to be located 4 feet from the rear lot line. A one-foot side yard setback variance on the alley east side of the property is also being requested. The 1,741 square-foot non-conforming parcel does not meet the minimum 8,500 square-foot lot requirement for the district.
Thank you, John. Any questions? All right. Open the public hearing. This is the last one, so this is everyone's last chance to speak on this. Did we miss anybody? Nobody still. All right. The public hearing is closed, and I believe we're ready for our last motion.
Prior to the motion, I want to say and comment, I want to thank everybody, all the cable viewers at home who are still watching, and the assembled interested individuals who are here. I want to thank you for being part of this process. And I want to thank my fellow board members for sharing their opinions on this as well. And I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Dave.
ZBA 25-0031, 608 Mary Court. In accordance with the established standards for approval, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants a variance of 26 feet from section table 5.17-1, single-family residential[1517.83]